Ding Felder?
Here.
Gudes.
Here.
Maniscal.
Here.
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 And thank you very much. I would like to call my friend and colleague, Mr. John Shafino, to please come forward for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Shafino is a very well-respected and known trial and appellate attorney who works for the law firm of Gunster, Yoclee, and Stewart here in Tampa. He practices in business litigation, labor employment, and mediation. He is finishing up a very busy year of service as president to an organization very close to my heart, the Hillsborough County Bar Association, and he's looking forward to being vice chair of the Florida Bar Standing Committee on Diversity to Inclusion and in other various activities. He was born in Jacksonville, raised here in Tampa, and with his wife Sarah has two children, Jack and Eleanor. So if everyone could please stand for their prayer and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Council. For those who wish to join me, please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities through peace, order, and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled and esteemed council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, and personal peace in their lives and joy in their tasks. We ask for your hand of blessing on this meeting and the agenda set before City Council today. It is in your most blessed name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, we move on to our workshop agenda to ceremonial activities for presentation of commendation for Officer of the Month. Councilman Citra.
Mr. Chair, council members, I thank you for allowing me to be part of the Public Safety Committee, and it is an honor to give this commendation to the deserved Officer of the Month. If I may start out, please. Any council member, anybody in the audience, anybody at home, would like to see what our officers do each and every day. I advise you, please, to go to the Citizens Police Academy. There you will find out exactly what our officers do in their daily lives in keeping us safe and protecting us. Having said that, we are here to honor one of Tampa's finest. There are over 900 of staff in our police officers. I wish we could honor all of them. However, we can only do one at a time. Officer Donnelly is worthy of this, and I cannot express my thanks to her and to all the other officers for what they do. And now I'm going to turn it over to Chief Dugan. Chief, would you please explain why this officer is worthy of this award?
Sure. Thank you. Good morning, Council. Brian Dugan, Chief of Police for the Tampa Police Department. This morning here for Officer of the Month, Officer Bobby Donnelly. You can hear some really good things that she's doing, not only within our department, what she does out there in the community. I think you all know the value of the community policing, and it comes in various aspects of what we do. She has been employed with Tampa Police Department since 2013. She transferred to the personnel unit back in August of 2018 and hit the ground running. She has attended 22 job fairs, including recruiting at local police academies, high schools, colleges, and universities. And you know the value of our recruitment process so that we have a diverse work group that we can really relate to our community. Her passion for the job and enthusiasm are contagious. She received a commendation from the criminal justice instructor at Jefferson High School who wanted to express his gratitude to Bobby for speaking to his students. One of Mitch is now a Tampa Police Department dispatcher due to Bobby's efforts. In addition to recruiting externally, Bobby responds to online questions from applicants, also along with phone calls and walk-ins. She is responsible for processing all of our civilian employees and reserve officer applicants. Her thoroughness and professionalism are exemplary. Bobby has shown true leadership traits. She always shows initiative by independently seeking opportunities to learn. She completed an instructor techniques course so she could assist the training unit when necessary. As she feels an area needs improvement, she immediately begins working on ways to correct the problems. Recently, she noticed that recruiting brochures looked outdated. She worked with the Public Information Office to recreate all the department's recruitment brochures, including the explorers and communications. Bobby has developed a reputation as a team player and is always willing to go beyond her job description to help with any additional task the department needs. She is a mentor with Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Tampa Bay and makes it a priority to spend time with her little. She always goes above and beyond. She does a very good job. I interact with her a lot with the personnel and recruiting, and she always has a sense of humor and likes to keep me in check, and I very much appreciate that. And her positive attitude certainly is contagious. And in recognition of her hard work and dedication, Officer Bobby Donnelly has been selected as Officer of the Month for May of 2019. Congratulations.
Officer Donnelly, for all your hard work, I am pleased to present you this commendation on behalf of Tampa City Council and the citizens of Tampa. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Please, don't call me sir.
Thank you.
Stand right there.
Good morning, Council. Good morning, staff. President Darla Portman with the Tampa PBA. Secretary Gene Haines here. I have had the honor and opportunity of working with Bobby Donnelly. We worked together when she first came on as an officer in North Boulevard Homes, and everything Chief Dugan said about her was spot-on. And this is no shocker to me that you got this award. So I appreciate everything you do for the department, and the PBA appreciates everything that you do too. So we give this to you, and I'm so proud of you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council. Jim Carson, Bill Curry Ford. Congratulations on your new position, Council. We see a lot of officers come through our dealership, but of course this time you rose to the top. So on behalf of the Curry family and myself, I'd like to give you a brand-new car.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Council. Chief Officer Tom Rowan, Tampa Bay Buccaneers. On behalf of the Buccaneers, we'd like to present you with this game ball for outstanding service to your community, the Tampa Police Department. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Morning, Council. Mike McArthur, Steps Towing Service. Congratulations on a job well done.
Thank you.
On behalf of Todd Step and Steps Towing Service, please enjoy a night out dinner on us at the Cheesecake Factory.
Thank you.
And arrive in style in a night out on a company limousine.
Thank you.
So enjoy it. Take some time off. You deserve it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council. Lea Van Name with Tampa Theater. Officer, thank you so much for your service in our community. Congratulations. And on behalf of Tampa Theater, I'm honored to give you candy and a gift membership so you can come and visit us on Franklin Street. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Good morning, Council. Carlos Ramos with the Tampa Hillsborough Expressway Authority. Officer, for your dedication and your service to the community, the Expressway Authority wants to give to you a gift card to Applebee's so you can go out for one night and a couple of other goodies as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, City Council. Welcome new members. Thanks for having us. My name is Dustin Portillo and Bob Canigliero with Casper's Company McDonald's Restaurants. Our job in the community is to build a bridge, and you're doing that exactly with the TPD. And we thank you very much for that. You know, going over your entire bio, it's what we do every single day. We're out there in the community making lives and doing a huge impact, and you're phenomenal. And here's a little bit of a little gift from us here at Casper's.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Council. Michael Kielgor, Columbia Restaurant Group. On behalf of the Gonsmart family, I have a $100 gift card. If you need our Columbia restaurants, enjoy it. Maybe take the limo and come see us.
Thank you.
They're making this too short and sweet. Steve Michelini, I'm here on behalf of a couple of different folks who'd like to honor you. One of them is the Aqua Restaurant at the Weston on Courtney Campbell. They're going to provide you with a gift certificate so you can enjoy lunch or dinner. On behalf of the Chichos Restaurant Group, breakfast, lunch, dinner, any one of their establishments on South Howard, Prestige Portraits, they're going to provide you with a gift package so you can go have your portraits done, the YMCA if you need that. You get a pass to the Y. And Yummy House China Bistro. And I know every month this comes up, all the other officers want to go with you to Yummy House. So congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your service. Gifts are in there. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good morning, Council. I would just like to say thank you to the Council, the staff, everybody that's here today for your support. I can tell you that back whenever I got hired as a new police officer, I did so for pure community service, to serve my community. It wasn't for benefits. The recruiters and I would make a joke saying that when you're that young, you'll do this for free. So that was me. The thought of being recognized for anything never crossed my mind. It was never an expectation at all till this day. The fact that I am recognized for this makes me feel completely beyond humbled and honored to be here and be recognized. Thank you very much.
Anything from council members? Councilman Gudes.
Well, as a person who has stood before council before and received Officer of the Month a couple of times, and back in my day, they gave you a nice watch with a TPD implemented, it's kind of like taboo when you look at how the tide turns to now that I'm so grateful that I can stand up here and now give someone else an commendation for the work they've done for our community and the sponsors. So congratulations to you and good luck in your career.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Thank you for your service. And as a marketing person, I can appreciate and thank you for your hard work on taking initiative on that. And besides just your own service, it sounds like you're trying to recruit even more great people to serve for our community. So thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And I join in just in thanking you for your service. I saw before that you also were in the US Army, so you have a real life of service dedicated to the same purpose, which is protecting us from people who would do us wrong. So thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
God bless you.
Thank you.
Any last words, Chief?
No. Said enough. She's so proud to stand next to her and serve along with her. Does a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Wonderful. I couldn't even, never would have thought of it. Thank you.
We now move to item number two on the ceremonial. Councilman Miranda for a commendation to Lee Hoffman.
Honorable Chairman, Tampa City Council, honorable members of Tampa City Council. Today's a special day, not only for Mr. Lee Hoffman, but for all of the city of Tampa, the accomplishments that he's made in 16 years. First of all, Lee Hoffman has worked for six mayors, and that means he's worked for one mayor than I have. So you'd be commended for that. You're not as old as I am. You don't look at one day over...
Fifty.
I was going to say 40, but I'll take 50. In fact, we'll both take 50. But it's not only has he done yeoman's work, perfect work, and when you look at the River Walk, you start on one side, you finish on the other side. Do you really think and say, "I wonder how this was put together? Who worked on this? And who's done all of the trustworthy work and brain work to putting it, making it happen?" Well, the gentleman to my left is the responsible person that worked on this from the beginning to the end. And not too many can say that. And I think that River Walk may be expanded, but up to now, it is the end at present time. Not only that, he served for us militarily in the United States Air Force, and he had the rank of Colonel. Congratulations, sir. He has been a dedicated employee of the city of Tampa. He's been serving the community, serving his country for so many years in the Air Force, and it's our pleasure to make this commendation to you, Lee, for the outstanding work you've done for the citizens of the city of Tampa. And I really wish you well. I hear you going back to my home in Alabama.
Alabama is correct.
Well, now you're going to be a Tide?
I haven't decided yet.
Well, don't say that too loud. There's a lot of gators in here, a lot of bulls, and a lot of Seminoles around, so be careful.
Yes, sir.
Take care of yourself. Thank you so much for all your service.
Appreciate that.
Appreciate it very much. Behind the staff that he's worked with. And also, along those lines, he's also went to work in the department that he was in charge of making sure that everybody was treated fairly. And I appreciate that very much.
Okay, I get to say something? Number one, I think it's very honored that you would do this. I'd certainly appreciate that. And, you know, 16 years with the city has just been amazing. And one thing about the River Walk, it greatly increased my prayer life, you know? It really did. And the Lord is good, and He answered all those prayers. And we have a River Walk. But it was an amazing project, and I just thoroughly enjoyed it. And even though I was kind of the fun of that, there are so many people in the city that made that happen. They really did. And the City Council was a key part of that because there are so many things that came before council that have to be passed in order to make all the pieces come together. And I really appreciate all the leadership that we've seen here in the council and the support. It's been wonderful. And you know, when I started working for the city, I didn't really know what to expect. I'm moving to Alabama, and I'm excited about that, to be with the grandkids. But as I look back, it's kind of bittersweet because now I have to leave this family, you know, that I have developed over time. And I have really come to love the people that I work with. And there's one thing about the city is we have good people. We really have good people. And I'm really going to miss all the folks that we got to work with and work for. And again, I just thank you so much for the honor. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone from council?
Yes, sir. Councilman Carlson.
Mr. Hoffman.
Whatever. And Mr. Hoffman? If, Councilman Carlson?
Just, I just wanted to thank you. I remember your name from way back, working on this, and friends like Beth Latham, Steve Anderson, a whole bunch of other people over the years who were involved with you. And I remember years ago, people thought it was impossible to do this. And I think that your case study or your results are a lesson in persistence. And so thank you for your persistence and hard work over the years to get what is, what done is what, one of the most beautiful things we have in our city. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Okay, next, last item on our ceremonial agenda. I would like to ask for my friend, Mr. Craig Gross, to please come up. Mr. Gross is the chaplain for the Florida Gold Street Mr. Gross is the chaplain for the Florida Gold Star Fathers and has dedicated his life to honoring his son's name. Corporal Frank Gross was killed in action in 2011 in Afghanistan when an explosive device caused a military vehicle to roll over. Corporal Gross now rests eternally in Arlington in Section 60. Craig is a longtime involved in man in local civic affairs in the Oldsmar area, as well as numerous patriotic and military endeavors. To list a number of organizations this man and his wonderful wife Toni Gross were involved in, we have to go over time. His journey has taken him with his wonderful wife Toni to so many places, from Tampa International Airport to welcome home troops with the USO, through Christmas holiday parties with the Vietnam Veterans of America, to Warrior Game Committee meetings, to meeting with the President of the United States at the White House, and also through his wonderful work at Frankie's Patriot Barbecue, a restaurant that you had for many years, named after your late son, Frank. So, it's our real honor to welcome here Mr. Gross, who's here to talk to us about Memorial Day and what it means to him. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much, Council. First of all, I want to show everybody my son's picture. This is Corporal Frank Robert Gross. I consider my son to be kind of like the poster child of Memorial Day, at least for our family. My wife and I both grew up in military families. My dad did thirty-one years in the Army, in Army Reserve, and her dad did twenty-nine years in the Navy. Both of them were distinguished officers and highly decorated. So, my son aspired to that. His mentors, let's say, his grandfathers, and while Frankie was growing up, he played with his G.I. Joe action figures, never called him a doll, okay? And so, my wife and I always respected Memorial Day. We never knew how much pain there could be associated with Memorial Day. I kind of twinge every time I see a commercial on TV about celebrating Memorial Day with buying a new mattress or a new car, or whatever the case may be, because that certainly is not what it's all about. For us, and I think many Americans, Memorial Day is exactly what it is. It's a day where we take pause, and we think about those who sacrificed and gave the full measure for our country, whether it's from the Revolutionary War, whether it is to the day that the Civil War started in Charleston, South Carolina, or whether it is Vietnam, or Iraq, or Afghanistan. People are getting it. Back when I joined the service during the Vietnam War, if you remember, soldiers and sailors and airmen and Marines were basically spit on. That has changed. I was recently in Branson, Missouri, where I had the privilege of singing on stage with Tony Orlando. It was kind of cool. And I had my cover on, you know, my Army hat, and everywhere I went, everywhere I went, people would stop on the street and say, "Thank you for your service." And now, whenever we go to events that are related to Memorial Day or to honoring our son, my wife and I are overwhelmed to see the number of people that are getting it, and this includes young people. We're very involved with the Junior ROTC through the Association of the United States Army, and you would be surprised this year how many hundreds of young people we have met at different events who really get what Memorial Day is all about. And there is a distinction. There's a huge distinction between Memorial Day and Veterans Day. And I, the thing that I really try to impress upon people is, it's not happy Memorial Day, it's let's thank those who sacrificed for our country. Let's remember them, let's honor them. And, you know, the picnics are great, the sales are great, all those other things are really wonderful, but let's not forget what it is really all about. There are soldiers who have been buried literally across the globe who fought for our freedoms so that we could sit here in an open forum and basically say what we want to say and do what we want to do and go where we want to go. It's because of the soldiers that have sacrificed and given the full measure for our country. And with that, I want to say thank you very much to the City Council for having me here this morning, and I want to say a big hua to Corporal Frank Robert Gross and to all who gave the full measure for our country. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you, Craig. And before, if I may, I brought a present for you that I guess I'll pass you the gavel if I may. I've known Toni and Craig for about three years, and they're just some of the nicest people I know on this earth, and I wanted to give this to you, Craig. Not a lot of people know that. We have actually had one president who was a Gold Star Father. A lot of people don't know that, and that's Theodore Roosevelt, whose son Quentin died in nineteen eighteen, June or July of nineteen eighteen in World War I. And Theodore Roosevelt was a man who withstood a lot. He was Medal of Honor recipient, San Juan Hill. He even took a bullet in nineteen twelve, but his son dying in combat broke his heart. His wife even died, his first wife died. And six months after that, Theodore Roosevelt died, and a lot of people said that one of the things that really took away his fighting spirit was his son dying in combat. So, I put this picture here of Quentin Roosevelt next to his father. This is in nineteen eighteen, and I believe he's actually wearing a blue star over there, symbolizing that his son is overseas, and I just wanted to give this to you, sir.
Thank you very much.
God bless you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I know some council members wish to speak.
You know, we can't thank you enough for your sacrifice, your service, your son's sacrifice, and I've often said that it's not just, you know, Monday is Memorial Day, every day is Memorial Day. I don't, I myself don't spend it at barbecues and at the beach, and there is no celebration. It's a day of remembrance, just as every day should be, but this is the national one. You know, I don't know what inspired me, maybe it was Councilman Viera with his love for Vietnam veterans and veterans in general, but last year I started visiting local cemeteries, specifically where my grandfather's at, and I started noting where or looking for Vietnam soldiers that were killed. Why Vietnam? Because, as you said, things have changed, but back then, you know, soldiers were coming back, being spit on, called baby killers, on and on. And these soldiers, although they gave all for their country, they never got that. They never got that, that honor and remembrance and respect that they deserved after giving everything. So, you know, I go to their graves and I leave little flags. Sometimes I clean them, and I think, you know, fifty years has passed since, you know, the Tet Offensive and the bulk of Vietnam, you know, almost fifty years. And you wonder, you go to these graves, and there's no flowers, there's, you know, you see that they're overgrown, you know, but it, you know, to stop by and clean it, leave a flag, leave a flower, something to know that, you know, fifty years later, people are still remembering, thanking them, honoring what Memorial is, Memorial Day is. You know, the sacrifice and the pain and everything that you've gone through, we will never know, but we are grateful as a nation, as a council. I've often said, one of my biggest regrets was not serving. September eleventh happened my senior year of high school, and I had friends going into the Army, going into the Marines, and I don't think there's a greater honor or level of service in that of serving your country. So, I just wanted to say thank you, and it's an honor to have you here with us today.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Seif?
Yes. First of all, I want to thank you for your service to our country, and thank all the service personnel for what they've done, for what they have done for our country, more especially the family members for the sacrifices they have made, not only during, but after their term of service. I think General Patton said it best for Memorial Day, we should not mourn the loss, but praise them for living. Thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you very much, sir.
Councilman Carlson?
Thank you, thank you for giving us a reminder about Memorial Day. Thank you to your family for your service. One quick request, you showed your son's picture to everyone behind, but I don't think everybody on camera could see. I think it would be great for us to see and for the folks at home to remember him. So, thank you so much to you and your family.
And I wanted to also remind all folks, I guess, who hear this, that, what is it, on Sunday at ten AM at three oh one at the Veterans Memorial Park Hillsboro, there's going to be a Memorial Day commemoration, and on Monday here at the American Legion, is it at eleven on West Kennedy, there's going to be another one. So, just in case if anybody wants to come. So, thank you, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. We will now go to public comment. Anybody that wishes to speak on any item on the agenda? That's not the workshop, because we'll have opportunity to speak at the workshops as well. Please approach the front and please state your name for the record.
Good morning, Connie Burton, NAACP Housing Chair. When I come, I make a point of standing for the prayer and sitting when the pledge is recited, because I have yet to experience or feel what real justice should look like here in America for my community. The commendations, you know, all of them is heartfelt, but I'm thinking about a recent article that was in the paper that talked about the chief having to investigate ten, discipline six, exonerate one, and three was terminated. And then we asked the chief in his investigation, in terms of the three officers that had to be terminated, and the crimes that they commit against people of color, all of the defendants was black. And I wondered, did these three officers just learn that bad behavior? Because I could tell you, since nineteen seventy, the war on drugs have been real as it relates to the African community. It was declared against the community, and we have seen a ravishing of lost life, whether it's been burying people in the cemetery, of having fathers, grandfathers, uncles, whomever is stuffed in these prisons, and we still dealing with it. A second issue this morning is that I'm still in concern about the one hundred million dollars that was mentioned in the paper that Jeff Bennett received in redevelopment. Our community would just simply like to know, how was he able to acquire that? Is it a special grant? What is it that District Five East Tampa can do to garnish that type of grant so we can transform our community? And how do we get the information? Do we come to you and ask you specifically to investigate for us, or do we follow the new mandates that the mayor has given you, that you have to jump five hoops before you can answer the cries of the community? We want to know, is the arena part of District Five, what was special about what's happening there, when we continue to lay out that if our community can have an economic uplift, we can transform our community too? We want to see real progress for District Five. We don't plan on waiting for a next four-year election cycle that it becomes talking points. We want to see immediate action so our children can have a future, that we don't have to keep on bemoaning the same issues every week. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone, oh, and Councilman Goots?
Ms. Burton, come back to the microphone, please. I didn't see the article, and if you can send that to my office, I'd like to look at that article. A hundred million dollars, a lot of money.
May fifth article, Tampa Times.
The city is supposed to be a transparent place for the public, and if you're saying that you want to know, we should be able to provide that with you, and maybe the budget office, Ms. Little, who handles our money, our CFO should be able to provide you, if that's the case, if we gave someone that kind of money or incentives. So, I suggest that you contact her office, and I'll also make a call to her office as well to inquire about that. And thank you for your concern.
Thank you, Councilman. Anyone else? Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else here for public comment?
Good morning, Council. My name is Rod Hatch. My wife Becky Hatch at ten thirteen East Patterson Street. I first came before to be council this past January due to a six hundred and forty square foot unpermitted skating structure built by my neighbor, twenty-five feet away from my back door, five feet away from my pool. Another neighbor and myself spoke with the property owner at ten twelve East Robson Street about our concerns due to the skate ramp multiple times, only to be told he's going to do whatever he wants on his property. I even offered to help him relocate the ramp to the other side of his yard, and he said he doesn't want to see it from his bedroom. This structure was built without a permit and no regard to the adjacent properties or setback requirements established by the city. The structure was built with what his, with what this neighbor deemed as sound enhancements, such as embossed plywood, hollow steel pipes, pool coping, but mostly out of plywood with unenclosed ends, which made the structure a giant amplifier. I have recorded decibel levels as high as one hundred and sixteen from my property line and seventy-four from within my home. Due to having no other options, I have had to call the police numerous times for noise violations in an attempt to get this structure deemed a nuisance. The structure was built on a lot which has an elevation three feet higher than our property and was situated on top of a three-foot-high retaining wall, less than a foot from the property line. When he has his friends, when he and his friends would use this ramp, they'd be looking straight down at us, robbing us of any privacy, looking in our windows, which is our entire first floor of our home, even having the audacity of sitting on our fence. We have approved, we have an approved nine-foot-high privacy fence. It's safe to say we have more than a reasonable expectation of privacy in our backyard, yet we have none. Additionally, due to the weight and rainwater runoff from this skating structure, his retaining wall is now leaning up against our privacy wall, making it lean. It is our understanding from the city that the now failing retaining wall is an issue we need to deal with in a civil action. I come before City Council, I came before City Council the first time asking for specific ordinances and regulations in regard to these skating structures. I believe people have the right to enjoy the hobbies and the privacy of their own backyard, however, not at the expense of others. Not only does it directly affect our privacy and ability to enjoy the tranquility of our own yard, but is detrimental to the markability of our home. Although the ramp was partially dismantled thanks to zoning enforcement, the ramp continues to direct all rainwater into his retaining wall, furthering the damage to both his retaining wall and my property. The property owner has now received a temporary permit to rebuild the structure based on a faulty engineering report, which is found legally sufficient for an investigation by the Florida Board of Engineers.
However... I'll give you another minute? Is that okay?
That's fine. Thank you, thank you. However, he has all intentions of converting this permit into a permanent structure. All the damage that this structure has created to our property, all the sound that this structure creates over legal limits, all the privacy laws that we previously experienced will now be built again, now only three to five feet further from the previous location. Today, I come before the new City Council asking again for specific ordinances that address these structures. Additionally, I am asking again for a stay on this permit due to the faulty engineered drawings until new regulations can be established. We have ordinance for everything else, but not for skating structures. A few simple ordinances, twenty-five-foot property line setback requirement, a hundred feet minimum setback from an occupied structure, concrete construction requirements to eliminate most of the sound associated with these structures, and so on. Tampa has spent millions of dollars on skate parks throughout the city, yet failed to protect owners from potential nuisances that these structures create for residential homeowners. More and more skating structures are being built, and it needs to be addressed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Maniscalco?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I know these folks well and their situation well, and, I mean, this is ridiculous of what they have to live with. You know, we see the intrusion into, they sit on the wall, they look into your backyard, the noise, the rainwater. Have you had any response from Mr. Snelling or his office or anybody in the city regarding this, or no?
I have. And the city, you know, has been great to work with, but yet nothing has gotten done.
Would it be proper to, I see Mr. Snelling in the audience, to ask him to come up real quick, or, because it is public comment? Mr. Shelby, is there an issue with that?
No.
No?
Counselor's question.
Okay. Mr. Snelling, what, I mean, I know, you know, there was language there for proposing an ordinance or making changes. What can we do to, because I see these skate, you know, structures are being approved, this is not the only one.
No, there are several, Tom Snelling, Planning and Development. There are several skate structures, but unlike this one that Mr. and Mrs. Hatch had next door to them, they have all gone through very extensive permit review and setbacks. The neighbors that, but the other approved skate structures, we haven't heard from them, in the sense, in essence, in my opinion, what you have is a bad neighbor. He's been very disregarded. Mr. Hatch's, what he said is absolutely true. He, you know, tried to contact him and be reasonable and things like that. And the neighbor has dug in and basically has just shined him on and said, you know, "Leave me alone. I'm going to do what I want to do," and et cetera. The retaining wall issue, it's starting to fall, and in terms of the structural integrity of that retaining wall, as it starts to get inspected, if it's determined that, the plans that he turned in show the water going to the front of his property, as is per code. If, when we go out there and we look at it, and we determine that it's not, and it's exactly as Mr. Hatch says, that the water is coming off the structure and into the wall, eroding the wall and causing it to lean into his fence, then we'll issue a citation or a, an inspection report that says you did not build it according to what you were approved for, he would have to rectify that. They do have an active code, a code case on the wall, that he needs to fix it. But in terms of what, this structure was built without permits. We cited him for triple fee permit review. We reviewed it as a necessary structure, as how we have reviewed all of the others. Has to meet accessory structure setbacks, which is the minimum, that's at three feet from the rear and the side yard. It's treated like that. And so we've done what we could from a legal perspective. He did apply for a temporary structure. He had to take it down, and he's also, Mr. Hatch is also correct, I fully expect for him to file for a permanent structure when that time comes, and we'll review it. In terms of the engineering drawings, I am not an engineer. I can't really read, you know, the calculus that goes into some of these things, but the gentleman that did this review is an engineer, and he found it to, you know, that it, the report was an engineered drawing that we accepted. So if there's a challenge to that, it has been submitted to the state, and they've agreed to investigate it. They haven't made a determination as to whether or not it's good, bad, indifferent, or what, but they have agreed, it's been accepted for review. If you wanted to move forward with coming up with specific credentials for playground equipment, or skate ramps, or other kinds of recreational-type structures as this, you certainly have the ability to do that. You're the legislative body. The code is a legislative document. You could do that. I will say, if you take something like a 100-foot setback from a residence, you're in effect prohibiting them, you know, on all, but somebody who has a one-acre lot somewhere. Anywhere in the ARS 50, 60, 75 districts, any of the commercial districts that also allow for residential uses, you would in effect be prohibiting them completely. And I would have to confer with legal as to something like that, to see if that's a route that, you know, we would even, would like you to consider that. But you certainly can come up with code requirements, or look at them, like you do for several things, different kinds of, you know, the, coming up later on, you're talking about the code for porches, and how to treat them a certain way so as to make them easier to enjoy and to build around the city. You've done it with signs, and prohibiting certain kinds of signs, and so from a purely code perspective, you certainly have the ability and the right to, you know, to think about some type of amendment for that.
And Chair recognizes Mr. Councilman Dingfelder.
Well, thank you, Tom. Not really a question for Tom, maybe for our city attorney. The, I was once looking at a house that was across the street from a city park, and I thought, wow, wouldn't that be really nice to be across the street from the city park? And then I sat there at the house, inside the house, and there was a skateboard park there, and that noise was driving me crazy, and I ran away from potentially buying that house so fast, because it's not just a half hour of it, it's hours upon hours upon hours of incessant noise, and obviously at a very high amplified level. I don't think that's fair to a neighborhood at all. I agree with you, Mr. Maniscalco, completely. You know, yeah, if you have an acre, you know, or something like that, or even a half acre, it might be a different story. But to be in a neighborhood and to be that inconsiderate, I think is wrong. Now, what can we do about it? What should we do about it? I think that clearly we should ask legal, not necessarily today, because they need to research it, but to come back to us very quickly, to see what constraints we might have in terms of prohibiting them, or making, you know, a 100-foot limit, which effectively, you know, might prohibit them in most zones. And also, to perhaps, and I know we've done this in the past, look at a moratorium while the potential ordinance is pending, because when we go to amend our zoning code, it can take, what, three to six months, because that's the planning commission, blah, blah, blah. But in the interim, we could have a moratorium, if we feel it's important enough, to make sure that there's no proliferation of, you know, of these types of things while the ordinance is pending. And I'm not asking for an answer on that today, but just something to think about. You know, I didn't realize that this was happening, but it sounds pretty horrific.
Thank you.
Councilman Goots.
Let me get a clearer-
And I love children, and I love children, and I'm not against skateboards.
We do too.
We do too.
Yeah.
But it's not for kids.
They can go to a park, they can go to a private facility, they can go do it elsewhere. They can do it out on the street or on the sidewalk, but not in the backyard like that.
So we've built a skate park inside of a residential backyard, is my understanding?
Yeah.
Correct. Correct. The picture's up. You can see how close-
It's 25 feet from our back doors, from that wall to that wall.
Put that frame back up, please. So we have, we have a skate, what I call a park, basically.
There we go. Then which house is yours?
It's the one in the, the white. That's the back of our home right there.
The back of our home with the travelers' homes. We spent about $50,000 in our backyard to now have all of these young men staring into our backyard and invading our privacy, and the noise.
Is there a pool in that backyard?
Yes, sir. The noise is extremely excessive. It sounds like a train.
And we're outside. We garden back there. I mean, we're not your typical Floridians hiding in air conditioning.
Being outside all the time.
We live at the outside.
I would concur, Mr. Dingfelder and Councilman Maniscalco. I mean, that would be a nuisance. I hate to say that, but when you look at the way that fence is, and you're talking about skateboarding, you're talking about people out in their own backyard, their own private events, and, you know, to me, it's like invading their privacy, because with those skateboards, they're going way up in the air.
He told me to get curtains on my windows.
We also believe it's a liability issue in regards to skateboards flying over people, flying over-
Falling off our privacy fence on our side.
Falling off our privacy fence on our side, which becomes a liability to us.
Well, I concur with Mr. Dingfelder. I think maybe legal needs to look at that and see what we can come up with, or, I just, that would be a nuisance.
Want to have a date certain for this?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir, Mr. Carlson.
Just a legal question. If we pass some new rules, would they be retroactive to existing structures?
No, sir.
No. So, so setting that aside for a second, it sounds, based on what they said, there are some codes that are being broken now with sound or other issues. Can't code enforcement or somebody do something about the existing-
The sound, the sound is enforced by TPD, and they call TPD, and TPD goes out. So the short answer is yes. They, there is a way to enforce the sound, and TPD will go out and do that. And there was another part of the question I don't-
No, just, it sounds like we could, we can and probably should go through a process of figuring out how to regulate these, but I don't know that that provides any relief for this particular family. So I wonder, what else, what other solutions there might-
Councilman Dingfelder.
I'm sorry. And I was thinking about that, too, Mr. Carlson. Without going into the details much, because we don't want to have this quoted down the road in some court case, but I think that because there was no permit originally, there's a temporary permit now, and maybe there's, in the future, there's a permanent permit, what I'm saying is, if there's a moratorium in place quickly, then that could catch any skateboard that's not, hasn't been properly permitted, perhaps this one. I don't know the details about this one at all, first I've ever heard about it, but I think there's a possibility, if we did a moratorium and an ordinance, that could provide some relief on some existing ones that haven't been properly permitted.
It, it has currently been properly permitted as a temporary structure.
Well-
And that expires in 180 days. But it has gone through a proper permitting process, went under the process of inspecting. It's the next step.
And that's fine. And we didn't want to talk anymore on that.
Okay.
Just for legal reasons.
Anyone else?
If you'd follow my drift.
Yeah, and I agree with that, Councilman, Councilman Maniscalco.
Maybe this is a ridiculous question, but how do you get this specific one dismantled? Because of, considering the circumstances, they're sitting on their fence, looking over their property, the noise is ridiculous, you can see that it's hollow, and the noise of skateboard wheels on plywood, or whatever the material, I think it's plywood. How do you live like that? I'm a very patient person, and I look the other way, and I tend to ignore things, but this would drive me nuts, especially considering, at the end of the day, I just want to go home and, most of the time, sit in silence, and if I had somebody skateboarding next door, you know, I don't know what I would do.
Krista Moore, Legal Department. There are pending cases on this. There are enforcement actions being taken by the city. We are aware of this problem. It is being addressed, and the individual enforcement of this case has to follow our standard rules and procedures. We can't make up new rules just for these people, but they, the city is very much aware of this. There are open enforcement cases, and it is being watched, and we will make sure that it complies with our codes.
Ms. Moore, thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Moore, how many violations does this already have with code enforcement?
I'm sorry?
How many violations does this have, this structure have?
I think they have one active case, Councilman.
I believe they have one active case. I'm not directly involved with that code enforcement case.
Okay. I, I, thank you. So due process is going to come about from code enforcement?
That's correct.
Can I add one thing?
Yes, ma'am.
There are several open code violation permit cases concerning a pergola that was constructed during the skate ramp construction that did not have a permit. He has also been cited for code violations on his driveway and his front walkway. So he has a lot of violations with the city of Tampa. We, of course, think the skate park is the biggest violation, because the driveway and the front walkway don't affect us, but this property owner does have a lot of open violations with the city, and I would hope that consideration would be given to all of those violations in correspondence with this.
And I'm, and I'm sorry for all the trouble. I know this is a, whatever statement, but y'all, I mean, you guys took time out of your Thursday to come down here to City Council to seek some relief from us, and what I'm looking at, I mean, so y'all's only remedy presently is to call TPD, so that means you've got to be on edge, wait for them to start, call TPD.
And by the time TPD gets there, it's start.
Yeah. And then you're aggravated, and your day is ruined. I'm, that's terrible. I mean, can we send a letter to this guy? Not that, I don't think that, I don't think he sounds like a gentleman who will-
Just establish some ordinances, please.
Yeah.
I don't know, I mean, something has to be done to protect our property values.
Have you inquired with the Neighborhood Association to put pressure on?
We have, and they basically brought it back to you guys.
We have, and they've basically given it back to you.
Oh, there you go. Okay, there you go. Thank you, thank you. Okay, good, no good. I'm glad.
Sir, we have been on top of this from day one. I'm sure everyone on City Council is tired of seeing our emails.
You'll all be hearing from me, if you haven't heard from me already.
Yeah.
You know, I'm ready to initiate a civil suit if I need to.
Yeah, we can. And Councilman Dingfelder.
Okay. You asked for a motion. I'd like to make one. I'd like staff and legal to come back June 6th with a, options, and I won't go into detail, but you've heard some banging around here today, to, to address this on a short-term basis and a long-term basis. And Mr. Shelby advises me that perhaps moratorium is not a great term of art, but there might be an alternative way of approaching it with the same effect. So, anyway, you guys put on your thinking caps and come back to us, I think. I'll see, see how much support there is. I have a feeling there's a lot of support.
Can I just, Councilman Carlson?
Under staff reports. And also, if we can slip in, apparently Ms. Coyle is here on a cycle of, of zoning code changes, and if we can slip that in into this cycle, and send it over to the planning commission sooner than later, then we won't miss out on three or six months, whatever the cycle is.
Second. And Councilman Carlson had a comment.
Yeah, just to clarify for the record, you're asking staff and legal to come back with any recommendations in this particular case, but also, not in this particular case, just in general, how to, how to handle-
Not in this particular case.
Okay, not in this, okay.
Generally, how to handle it, and frankly, in my opinion, potentially prohibit-
Can you just explain it?
Prohibit skating.
Skating facilities in-
Facilities in residential zoning districts.
Thank you. Okay. Anything further from Council? We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Coyle, I apologize. I didn't see you.
Kathy Coyle, Planning, Design, and Development Coordination. I just wanted to advise Council, it's codified that we have two cycles per year for code amendments. So this would, if you made a motion to actually do something, to directing me to make the change to the code, it would fall into the July cycle, which we could process as quickly as possible to process in batches. We could process it before the end of the year, probably by September or October, basically.
Great.
But you couldn't put it in this cycle, because this is January.
We're just, I think, looking for some hope for these poor folks, so that's-
No, I totally understand. I just wanted to let-
Yeah, great. We have a motion by Councilman Dingfelder, a second by Councilman Maniscalco. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I think that's a good, open-ended discussion we can have, that can give staff time to have all reasonable remedies. Councilman Carlson.
Can I just add? I think, from what you said, this is, and maybe I'm behind the times, but this is something new that is popping up, that people are starting to build these. And so I think what we're doing is trying to address a new phenomenon that hasn't really existed before, so we're asking staff to come back and-
True and correct statement, yes. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you, guys. Anyone else here for public comment? Okay. Mr. Sal Trito has been waiting patiently. I know you wanted to address council an issue, sir.
Good morning. Sal Trito, City Attorney. A question came up in one of your earlier meetings on whether someone who comes before us for a zoning issue or a variance has the right to ask for a vote at that particular time, and there was, everybody wasn't on the same page, including me. And when I had, I asked my staff to go back and look at this issue, and the consensus from my staff and from everybody else out there is, if someone has met all the standards to bring this item before you, they can insist on having a vote.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Yes, sir. Councilman Dingfelder.
Thank you, Sal, Ms. Trito. So, what I was asking for when we had this last discussion, what Mr. Shelby and I discussed it, was, is there any case law? Is there any ordinance? Is there any statute? Is there any federal constitutional provision that would demand that? Because in some of our discussions, we say, this is our meeting, we establish the rules. If we, in that case, the other night, many of us felt we needed more information, and maybe it would be a good idea to put it off, to get that additional information, which is often the case. Mr. Citro and I experienced that a lot with the VRB. You know, we need more information, we put it off. So, is there any, is there any case law or statute on point?
There's no case law statute on point. What you're dealing with is a due process issue.
Right.
If someone has met all the standards, and they bring this before you, they're entitled to have a decision before any group they come before, and the consensus of all the attorneys we've talked to are, it's a due process issue, so it's a constitutional issue, and they are entitled to have a vote. If you're not satisfied with what they've given you, your option is very obvious. You can say, you can vote no. But continuing it is an issue.
Ms. Moore, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Nope.
You're just on the wing there.
Krista Moore, Legal Department. I just did some legal research and spoke with Mr. Trito, so I was just making myself available. with Mr. Tori, Mr. Torito, so I was just making myself available, if there were any questions.
So, all right, well, well, I'll accept that, that's fine. Not happy with it, but I'll accept it.
All right, anybody else? No? No? All right, we will, uh, anybody else for public comment at this time? No? All right. Moving on from that, we go to workshop item number four. Uh, this workshop item is about a creation of a Citizen Traffic Advisory Committee. This was a, uh, motion that I had made several months ago, and, uh, it was brought to my attention by Mr. Tim Keportz of the Old Seminole Heights Neighborhood Association, and the idea was, uh, of a creation of a new board. It would be a Sunshine Board, uh, titled, or a potential title, a Citizens Transportation Advisory Board, basically, um, certain, uh, numbers, certain, uh, members, certain amount of members, um, representing all parts of the city. So it would be, you know, South Tampa, West Tampa, East Tampa, and, um, an advisory group that would essentially, uh, make recommendations to our Transportation Department regarding, for example, let's say, you know, the South Tampa individual, um, you know, we have road repavings that, that have been neglected, or should be looked at or prioritized, sidewalks, sidewalk repairs, new sidewalks, um, speeding, traffic, traffic calming issues, uh, stop signs or four-way stops where they were lacking, um, and, and whatnot, just to get a, a basis of it. Ms. Duncan, were you briefed on anything regarding this in these last few days, or no? Because I know we spoke with William Porth, and I know Mr. Keportz was in contact, so...
Yes, good morning, City Council, Jean Duncan with Transportation and Stormwater Services. I did receive yesterday a, uh, outline of a, a proposal from, I believe, the neighborhood, um, and so I'm here just to kind of see what the suggestions are, and we can see how we can work that in with the, uh, public engagement that the administration, I'm sure, is working on, to see how we want to blend in citizen input, along with the technical criteria that we have, to determine what the needs are for the different assets of our transportation system. So, uh, I did see that, uh, PowerPoint yesterday, I believe that was the intent, was for that opportunity for that to be shown today, so I'm just kind of here to listen and take back your, uh, suggestions, and see how we can move forward on that.
Okay, uh, Ms. Torito, you gonna...
Yes. Sal Torito again. The structure that I've seen is one that we can't use, the way they've had their pyramid built up, they, they're looking to be oversight for the administration, for the Planning Commission, for everybody else, that is not appropriate for the, how we operate here. Your oversight, you're the ones that are sitting here to oversee what the administration does, we can't substitute your oversight for someone else's. They're perfectly within their rights, if they want to set up a committee, they want to give advice, they want to give all kinds of documentation, they can make public records requests for the documentation they want, but the structure that I've seen in their PowerPoint presentation is one that doesn't fall within our charter, and within, within the jurisdiction that you have, and what the administration has. They can't be overseeing the administration, that is a separate function.
Okay.
It's a structural issue, anybody can put any committee they want together and give advice, they could come down here and tell you what they'd like, it happens all the time now, so what they're asking for is far more formal than our structure would permit.
No, no, how I look at this, uh, pyramid, they're at the bottom, uh, at the Citizens Transportation Advisory Board, we submitted the, uh, the PowerPoint for approval, and, uh, yeah, you have it there. The independent oversight committee, um, I believe, is in regards to the, correct me wrong, All For Transportation, and that's the, you know, that's the, the, the sales surtax that was approved. They're at the bottom, basically like, when you have the MPO, they have the CAC, and the CAC meets, and, uh, they make their recommendations, and they submit it, you know, or they present it to the board and say, you know, we don't like line item this, or this project should be removed or added, that's it, they don't have any more, uh, they don't control funding, they don't control, uh, what projects get in and out, it's just simply opinion, so, um, I don't know if you, uh, if you misunderstood, the, the independent oversight committee is, is, that's with All For Transportation, so they would be at the bottom, and they would give their recommendation to staff, uh, you know, present to City Council, and then it would, you know, it's up to Ms. Duncan and the Transportation Department to say, okay, you know, we see a demand here, or maybe we could prioritize this, or, you know, 'cause, you know, council approves, or we, you know, she makes the decisions and whatnot, and we put the request, but that's it, it's simply a, an advisory board giving an opinion.
Is it an advisory board that is being established by council, or is it going to be independent advisory board that they're setting up themselves and bringing information to you? I don't know the structure, I'm not sure what the answer is.
Well, like, like we, like we've established boards, and, you know, like the Charter Review Commission, or we have the Budget Advisory Council, something like that, they come before us and they say, you know, these are some of the points that we like to look at, um, you know, put forth in the, uh, in the next budget or so, um, but to answer more of the questions, there's Mr. Tim Keportz here, if he could come up and just give a, a brief, um, description of this.
And, and if I may, before that, I mean, just to, kind of second what Councilman Maniscalco said, I, when I saw this, I thought this was an awesome idea, I'm 100% behind it, um, i, i, if, if it is used like the Budget Advisory Board that we rely upon a lot for advice, um, where this is a board that would be charged with the, not with the Ten Commandments, but with the Ten Suggestions, so to speak, uh, so, I, I, I think it's a great idea, but that's kind of how I see it, but, go ahead, sir.
Uh, good morning, uh, Council, Tim Keportz, I reside at 404 East Idlewild Avenue, I happen to be the president of the Old Seminole Heights Neighborhood Association, also the vice president of Heights Urban Court Chamber. Uh, this concept, if we could pull it up on the screen, uh, and this is actually the last slide, this concept sort of came out of a number of meetings, unfortunately, the incident last year, uh, that happened on Bay Shore, uh, with the two individuals were killed in a speeding incident, uh, has happened throughout the city. That got a lot of attention, City Council immediately jumped into action, FDOT and City of Tampa were able to make changes on Bay Shore very quickly. Old Seminole Heights Neighborhood Association was asked to meet with a number of the associations in the South Tampa area, and then we had a bunch of other one-off type meetings. What has happened is, you've had individuals like myself, other neighborhood association presidents, individual citizens come before you and ask for immediate action, going to Ms. Duncan's office, working with William Porth, working with the Police Department, but they're all sort of one-off type situations. Sometimes we get immediate action, a four-way stop gets put in on Idlewild in Hampton Terrace, we get a new stop sign put at Violet. A number of you during the campaign season stood there with us as citizens, holding up the Vision Zero signs, you know, we live here, our children live here, please slow down. That's effective for a little while, but what I'm proposing is that we have a little bit of a more structured, uh, situation, again, if you can put the, uh, presentation back up.
It's up on our screen.
Oh, it is on your screen.
Yeah, there it is.
So, again, just to, uh, the point that was made when I first came up, the IOC is part of the All For Transportation, it's the 1% that goes out of that funding, that board already exists, of course, we know there's a lawsuit we're standing by on, the agencies, whether that's FDOT or City of Tampa, um, putting in improvements, clearly the mayor and, um, and I should say, uh, City Council right below it, you are the oversight, you are the decision makers, the staff below you, but what we're finding is, is we have one-off meetings, and the information then falls apart. Either the citizens get tired, they get tired of coming out to evening meetings, things get put onto a website or Facebook, and then very quickly, it, uh, gets lost in the shuffle. So, one way that, in our area, that we've been focused on, uh, trying to keep on top of this, I'm gonna slide this up, is this Heights Traffic Awareness Campaign, and the idea behind that was, holding those Vision Zero signs, going to the same intersection for six weeks in a row, we've created a process, that can be exported to any place in the city, so you all represent different portions of the city, that can be exported to South Tampa or East Tampa, we've got a small group of citizens that are willing to show that area how we did it, and how we were able to influence the process. You've got sidewalk stompers, you've got other citizen coalitions, by bringing all of that information into a regularly and well-established board, or whatever you all want to call it, uh, it'll allow us to then bubble those, uh, inputs up to the planning staffs, we would ask that somebody from Stormwater Transportation and a TPD officer be assigned to that board to provide professional input, but allow us to then bring that into, uh, the city staff, and then to the board.
And Councilman Dingfelder, did you have a question?
Yeah, I did want to interrupt, but if you're done.
Sir, yeah.
I, I think it's an intriguing idea, I think, uh, City Attorney kind of had some concerns jurisdictionally, that we, you know, and, and chances are, as Mr. Chairman pointed out, you know, we could, or, or, Mr. Maniscalco, we could, um, establish this very similar to the Budget Advisory Council Board that, that we have, um, that would respond to us. I don't think we can expand our jurisdiction to, to allow, or to tell this board, okay, you can contact county planners, you can go to, directly to Jean Duncan and tell her what to do, and blah, 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 but I think we, we stray from our jurisdiction and our, our, our ability. But, I'm, I'm, uh, you know, I'm intrigued, um, by, by the notion, regardless of, of the All For Transportation money, I think it's probably, we all get a lot of calls about traffic and transportation, more and more, as traffic gets worse and worse, um, and, and I think for, to have an established citizen board, um, as a place to kind of hash out these issues is, is a good idea. Structurally, Mr. Maniscalco, Mr. Chairman, I think it'd be easier and simpler if we all just picked one person.
Yes.
Um, because that way, we don't have to get into, you know, voting and that sort of thing.
I agree.
Which is what I think we do on the Budget Board, correct?
Yes.
So I think that's just easier than have seven members.
I agree.
So, so anyway, I'm, I'm in favor of, under that structure.
I, I was gonna say that I, um, I agree with Councilman Dingfelder, but, you know what, I go at the end, excuse me, then did you, Councilman Carlson?
I forgot I go at the end.
Yeah, I, I think like my colleagues here, I spend a lot of time with Tim and other activists on transportation neighborhood issues, and it's a high priority for all of us. I think the, the challenge for City Council is, what influence do we have over it, and, and, and I think the challenge with a committee like this is, what will we be able to do as City Council with their recommendations? And you all who've been here longer may know better than I, but ultimately, you know, staff is going to have to implement it, and they're, they report to the mayor, so first of all, um, I would suggest that we have maybe two appointments by mayor if, if we do this, because the, if the mayor's not involved, it's not gonna be, um, it's not gonna go forward. Number two is that, ultimately, the planners, um, and the staff have to, have to develop these plans, there's ad hoc, uh, requests and complaints that we're getting every day, but, but if, if we look at the possibility for the All For Trans, what we can do with the All For Transportation money, uh, because of the lawsuit, some things are delayed right now, but there is an opportunity where there's money to do, to do visioning and planning, and I, I think that it would be a good idea for City Council to have some input into that process, but we need to work collaboratively with the mayor's office and the staff to do that, and, uh, we can have this committee, but ultimately, we've got to figure out a plan that's going to actually work. One thing that I, um, believe strongly that we should start on is sidewalks, um, uh, we all talked about that a, a, a lot over the last few months, and, um, the sidewalk budget is going to go up exponentially, and we, we don't have a plan for it, the staff wants to create a plan, the, the, the money is being held back for, to a certain extent, but to the extent that we can maybe give input into the sidewalk visioning process, and then ultimately, beyond that, a, a cycling visioning process, and then, and then beyond that, you know, buses or rail or whatever, that, there could be specific input that could be implemented right away. Sidewalks are something that's happening right now, and, and hopefully, uh, as the priorities have been suggested, site, starting with, uh, safe routes to and from schools, and maybe with, um, uh, neighborhood commercial districts, uh, we could do some visioning for sidewalks that, I don't, I don't like using the word, the terms complete streets, because most people don't understand what that is, but if you look at, if you look at how sidewalks and pedestrians integrate with a, 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 a neighborhood commercial district, it could really transform an area in a very positive way, and we have the money to do that. My question to us is, is how can we influence that process, how can we get the community involved in a meaningful way, that's not us setting up recommendations that the, the staff and the mayor, uh, can't implement?
Uh, Councilman Citro.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, Tim, thank you for putting up the, uh, the, the amendment to your plan there, to keep both branches of government in the city happy, the mayor and, uh, the executive and the administrative, um, excuse me, the executive and the legislative, uh, most other boards do have two appointees by the mayor's office, however, this is just an advisory board, it is non-binding, non-committal, I would still like to see, Mr. Chair, two appointees by the mayor.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Would you like to elaborate on what you wrote down there?
Those are all excellent points, and again, if we can pull that back up, and maybe you can see that on your...
We have it here.
Screen, so, uh, again, this is, this is a workshop, so, uh, certainly modifications appropriate, I don't know if this is the right title, Citizens Transportation Advisory Board, uh, Committee, whatever the right term is, uh, that's appropriate, uh, we do have the Budget Advisory, uh, Council, so, whatever the right title is, but my additions here, uh, Representatives from Tampa City Council for, so four, the three at large, the mayor would be selecting somebody, since she lives in the urban environment, maybe that's perfect for the mayor to select that individual, and then one chair, that way you have your nine citizens, and again, it is input up, it is just input, so, working with the professional staff, providing ideas, working with citizens groups, like, citizen groups, like the sidewalk stompers. Another point that I'd like to bring up, I learned this at, uh, Cafe Con Tampa several weeks ago, the planner that is responsible for sidewalks that came from the county said that she is working off of a $600,000 sidewalk budget, the All For Transportation's moving that to $6 million. She does not have a plan, so, I'm not besmirching her by any means, because why would you plan for something a few years ago when you didn't know your budget was going to get a tenfold increase? We need input to identify where we need those sidewalks, that's just a small example, so allow the citizens to bubble that information up, we're not certainly demanding anything, uh, we're not driving the train, we're just providing input.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Councilman Maniscalco, then Councilman Carlson.
This is, this is really a wonderful, uh, thing that is needed, you know, my office gets calls, or I get people that stop me in a coffee shop, or on the street, or in a neighborhood association meeting saying, what are you gonna do this, what are you gonna do this? If we can condense all that to this board, and, and there will be equity, and I like what, uh, Councilman Carlson said about having the mayor have their, the appointees, uh, because we want to create a partnership, you know, with the administration, knowing everybody's voice is heard, um, and as we appoint one of, you know, one person, eh, each one of us, I would certainly appoint somebody from the district that I represent, because of course, it makes sense, so there is equity, you know, you have the southwest, east, and north, um, I, I wasn't here when the Budget Advisory Board was created, uh, Mr. Shelby, what would, what would we have to do to, do we ask staff to come back during a regular council meeting, to, uh, provide like a foundation or a basis for this, um, for this board to be created? It raises a lot of issues, maybe Mr. Torito would just want to, uh, opine as to, uh, the proposal as it's presented, before we move forward with my question, I appreciate that.
Sal Torito, I, I think you're getting into the administrative function rather than the legislative function, as a legislature, you have the absolute authority to set up a committee if you want, and choose members you want, putting the mayor on there gets very close to getting over the line. What's gonna happen here, and I know people don't like to hear this, and some of the newer council members especially don't like to hear these things, the mayor sets the policies on those kinds of projects, you have absolute right to turn them down when they come to you, but you can't be involved in the prop, the preparation, you can be advised by anyone you want, if you set up a committee, that is within your jurisdiction to do that, they can advise you on anything you want, putting the mayor in here, I think, crosses the line on mixing the administrative and the legislative functions that you have. So what I'm getting, I'm recommending to you, that if you set a committee up, do not include anyone from the mayor's staff on that, I mean, I'm sorry, the mayor's cho, choice, this is your committee, and you should keep it clearly distinct between the administrative and the judicial, I'm sorry, and the legislative branch.
And I, and I appreciate that, I rem, I was here for the, uh, the, the police review board, and I know there was, you know, some issues, the mayor and the council and whatnot, so we can avoid that and make this a strictly City Council Committee, where we appoint the people, and then the committee, you know, you elect your chair, or whatever, at that point, or as a representative that would come before council and say, you know, these are the recommendations we have and whatnot, I mean, we can do that, is what you're saying.
Yes, and the other thing is that I don't, I don't want to get too over the line right now, hey, but the administration is the one that actually prepares the plans that come before you, they're gonna come to you with recommendations. You obviously have input, because you're gonna have people coming up here and saying they're not happy with this, which is your role, if they come to you with contracts that you don't like, you simply turn them down. So really, the administration is the one that has to spearhead the process with your input, because clearly, if you don't want to approve something, there's gonna be a compromise made, and the way that's done is, these plans are brought before you, that's strictly administrative function, there are people in staff right now that are coming before you with recommendations on how things should move forward. You have the budget process that comes up, it's gonna be in the budget, if you don't want to approve those projects, you don't want to approve those functions, that is within your jurisdiction to do that, but it's really gotta be initiated by the administration, and then approved by you at some point.
All right. Uh, Mr. Shelby.
Yes, if I could just follow up on that. Uh, the other things to take into account, to answer your question, question upfront, is if the council wishes to move forward on this, is, uh, to give me several weeks' time to be able to work with the city attorney, uh, to be able to come up with some recommendations. There are a lot of issues that need to be addressed. Uh, one of them is, um, again, uh, the, uh, and Mr. Torito, uh, alluded to it, but the question is to what degree is the obligation of the administration, and frankly, there is none, to commit staff resources to this committee? Because if it, if it is an issue that involves staff, they are not obligated to participate in this. If it's a burden upon them and they have, uh, tasks that they have to do, then, then, then it would be inappropriate for them to participate if they're unable, unwilling, if that's the mayor's direction. The other thing is, uh, and Mr. Torito also mentioned this, uh, with regard to the budget. Certainly on a week-by-week basis, you are presented with contracts that are the culmination of the planning, and your step i, is the beginning of the execution of it. Um, prior to that, you do have the budget review. And, uh, just an observation, your, um, role in, uh, this process relative to transportation as a result of the transportation service passing will create an obligation of this board to give the capital improvement plans greater scrutiny, because all of this is, um, going to show its way through the five-year plan and the transportation elements of the capital improvement plan as they come, uh, come online. So, that all being said, the final thing I want to remind you, council, is that when you delegate this board, you create a sunshine board. Therefore, they have to apply, uh, uh, comply with every element of Florida law relative to sunshine. That would be notice of the hearing, a, a suitable location that has to be provided to them, that complies with the, the strictures of Florida statutes and the case law, and also that minutes are taken. And you know that, um, you have, relative to your budget committee, it is, uh, an undertaking of your administrative staff that allows that board to exist and to support it. So you also have to take into, uh, common, uh, into, uh, consideration council resources and your resources in the creation and sustenance of this board.
Thank you, Mr. Shelby, and, uh, the Councilman Maniscalco, and then, uh, Mr. Carlson.
So then, uh.
And then Mr. Dingfelder.
Mr. Shelby, if we gave you, I, you know, I mean, of course, the board would have to agree, 60 days or 90 days to explore this and see how it can be, you know, best structured, you know, if it's the best, uh, way to take and, and, you know, best, best, best path to, uh, to take, um, would that be okay with you?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
And, and, and unless there's any other direction that council wants to at least communicate to the public and to me as to what you're looking for, I, I have a pretty good sense of what council wants, so, but I'm happy to take individual input, and I'm happy to work with, uh, with options, rather than just coming back with a single recommendation.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Carlson has been patiently waiting.
No, it's important discussion. Um, you know, philosophically, I agree with all, all of you. I just, if somebody wants to get results, and, um, you know, expecting what Mr. Torito was going to say, uh, I don't want to set up something that, that raises expectations for the community that we can't do anything about. We don't have any control over staff, and we can give ideas, but that's really the, the mayor's job. And, you know, separate from this conversation, I did have a discussion with the mayor about sidewalks, and, and she asked me to just be patient and, and let, let her work with staff, and I said, great. Um, I, I think it's great, i, i, important to get public input, uh, but, uh, but if it, if it can't go anywhere, then, then it will feel like a big waste of time. If we do do something, point number two, if we do do something, I would recommend, I, I don't know the structure in city council, but at, on other boards I sit on, we can set up task forces that are limited period of time, um, three months or six months. But it's, but it would be interesting as a test case to set up a limited time period task force that would study one piece of it, maybe sidewalks, and get input, and see how we can work with the administration. And if we can, if it, if it, if it produces collaborative ideas to work with the administration, then we could decide to expand it beyond that, uh, but then it would, uh, set expectations. The third thing, which is a totally different direction, but I would just ask you all to be open-minded. I think that we ought to look at and maybe have staff investigate putting in a requirement of maybe a certain percentage of budget on these projects as public input and public involvement. Uh, the problem in the last few years with all governments, but in particular in Tampa, is that as they've done public works projects, they've cut the budget on public involvement. And so, a big part of the complaints that we get are, um, people who say that they haven't been noticed that something's happening in their, in their neighborhood. And sometimes they have, and it, they didn't see it. But there should be more public engagement. The way you avoid issues like Bay to Bay, which was in my district, is having more public meetings and having more public discussions. The, the fight that ended up with Bay to Bay was completely unnecessary had we had a bigger public engagement budget on it and had, had, um, city staff meeting with the neighborhoods. Now with the offer transportation money, we'll have the money and resources for the staff to do that. We just, eh, eh, maybe, uh, Ms. Duncan or someone could come back to us with advice on, on how to, how to set that up. What, what I've seen happen with governments is that people who believe in engaging the public will spend money on it, people who don't, don't. I think this mayor is inclined to do that, and now with all for transportation, we have money to do it. Uh, but maybe we ought to encourage it somehow.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Dingfelder, and then Councilman Goode.
So, poor Ms. Duncan's name's been mentioned 16 times, and, and we haven't, we haven't heard from her, and I'd like to, um, when I, when I get done, uh, if that's okay with Mr. Chairman, just to see if she has any input on this. She's been sitting patiently. Uh, number two is, eh, eh, with all due respect to, uh, Mr. Torito's comments, I can see where Sal's coming from in regard to that it's cleaner, perhaps, if it's just a council, seven council member. However, out of sort of politeness, uh, or in the spirit of cooperation, as somebody said, I would like to perhaps counsel to give that option to the administration of, if they'd like to appoint two, two general members, not a chair, but two general members to add to, to add to our seven. And, um, uh, if the administration, obviously with legal sanction, um, uh, is comfortable, you know, or, or would like to do that, then maybe we would, uh, include that in our, in our, uh, proposal. You know, so that, that's, that's.
Just to be transparent here, I'm going to recommend that she doesn't, you can ask her, but I'm going to recommend from a legal perspective that she doesn't put anybody on the committee, being very upfront with everybody, nothing sneaky about this.
Right, but we have committees where we do, and we have committees where we don't.
The only one that I'm aware of is the, is the police oversight, where that was done through fairly heavy negotiation, uh, whether the mayor is going to set it up, whether the council is going to set it up. If you want to go that way, be my guest, that's going to be a long, drawn-out process. And let me just give some background for some of the members who haven't been here in the past. The Budget Advisory Committee is probably the best example. What has happened in the past? Before the budget was approved, the Budget Advisory Committee, after doing all of their research, would come to city council with a recommendation, and I can tell you that probably 90% of their recommendations were accepted by the administration. They were good recommendations, the people on these committees were very good at what they did. They'd work at this for a whole year at a time, and they'd come back before the council, and they made their presentation first to council to brief them on that, what they wanted to see done. And if it hadn't happened on that budget, by the next budget, almost all of their recommendations were approved. So you do have, I'm not trying to dissuade you from anything, but there, that input does have an impact on the administration's functions as well. They do, they do listen.
Which is exact, which is, yes. And that's, that's how I see us modeling this in the same way. That it's, it's not set up for, uh, you know, just to, to, you know, for, for a month or two. It's a long-term commitment from any members like that. But again, and maybe you and I are just differing legally, just because the mayor might appoint these two individuals to add to our seven, doesn't give them any additional authority, doesn't give those two people any additional access, doesn't commit the mayor or the administration to X, Y, and Z. It's just, or, or the, the, you know, it's just two additional people. But you do what you have to do, I'm just saying out of politeness, um, that would be my suggestion. And then, fa, as a follow-up, I'd love to hear from Ms. Duncan if she has anything to add to any of this discussion, Mr. Chair. It's up to you.
Oh, yes, sir. Uh, well, and quickly, uh, Councilman Goode, if I may, was waiting, and then we'll hear from Ms. Duncan.
I have a couple of concerns. Uh, when I look at the structure, we have four districts. I don't understand what the one urban, and I don't understand the, the one plus chair means. Uh, you can explain that to me, because I don't know what the urban would, would entail.
I think we sort of chuck that now, for now.
Yeah. Well, you add, you add, you add, well, you add two, would, would have made 11, so with, with.
No, adding, we would have struck those and then added two for the mayor.
Okay, all right, okay, 'cause if you keep that, I still have a problem with this urban and a chair. If you've got each one appointing a member, then we want to appoint a chair, do, do their discussions, and you appoint a chair, but just saying this person's going to be the chair, I think you, yeah, you, you just do a lot of damage to that.
Yep, very top-down question.
Good morning, city council. Um, we certainly want to have good, solid public engagement with our citizens now that we have this great opportunity to have all this additional funding for projects. Uh, I think it is more interested in now because there is more money to spend. Currently, the way things work is you, I'm sure somewhat aware of, we have projects that are corridor projects, such as someone mentioned Bay to Bay, you know, big projects that we have a, uh, public meeting on that project. We go out and engage with the public on that particular roadway, and, um, take that input and weave it into the technical aspects and make some decisions. We also have what we call program categories, which is sidewalks, streetlights, paving, that, uh, are not as sophisticated as the roadway projects, where we come up with a list of locations based on, for example, with paving, it's based on the pavement condition. We don't want roads to get too, uh, dilapidated and have to go rebuild the entire road base. So we have a technical process we use to determine how to prioritize the needs for certain things such as sidewalks, paving, and streetlights. In the case of streetlights, we're using accident data, crime information. In the case of paving, we're using the pavement condition of the roadways. And in the case of sidewalks, we're looking at connectivity of our collector roads and our schools to make sure we have a good network of connectivity, uh, for the area. So the question is, how do we take the technical process of prioritization, and then weave in the public interests and the, and the, the public requests that the public is wanting to have, and sort of infuse that into the other part of our planning? So, I'm hopeful that, um, you know, we've got a transition team coming in to kind of look at city processes. I'm hopeful that we can look at our public engagement, how that's set up, and determine what's a good, uh, thoughtful way to move forward with our new monies, to take the input in as well as the other criteria we have to use, as well as coordinating. You know, a lot of times, the timing of a project depends on the fact that the water or the wastewater department's doing a big project, so the timing shifts because of those factors. So, there's a lot of dynamics to come in, that come into play in determining what the priorities are. But certainly, the public input is an important part of that, it's just one of many factors that we're looking at. So, I would look forward to, um, talking with the administration about what would be a good way to have some kind of structured process going forward. I know, for example, in St. Pete, they have a bicycle, uh, safety action committee, eh, we can call it whatever name we want to call it. But they have a good model over there for, uh, their program categories, how people can weigh in on sidewalks and paving and streetlights. Then they have another program for the actual bigger projects that have a standalone meeting for that project. So I think we can work something out. We're definitely interested in getting public input on all the work that we're doing. Uh, we do have a backlog of locations we already know, or we need to go out and jump out and, and start doing some work. So, there's not, we want to get this set up with some good public engagement, but certainly, when that money becomes available, we'll be out, we'll be able to go out and start working in many areas, because we already know where the needs are. We've just been waiting for the opportunity for the money to come along. So, that's just sort of my philosophical view on this, and, you know, we're happy to try to move forward in a real, uh, productive way, and like, uh, Mr. Carlson said, have some good management of the expectations of the public. If they take their precious time to get involved, what's the benefit to them as far as seeing some, you know, um, productivity that's coming out of their, their input?
Anyone else? Um, and, and if I may, just for, for my comments, I mean, this is something that I was very supportive of. So, so your neighborhood association then brought this forward, or created this idea, I guess, if you will?
Actually, I, no, it's just, really just my idea.
Oh, well, okay.
Uh, Councilman Maniscalco is the legislative aide, uh, just kind of talking about what could we do.
Frank?
Again, I happen to sit in a unique situation of working with businesses on the local chamber in the Heights Urban Core, being the president of the largest neighborhood association in Tampa. We're not an HOA. The two citizens that were up here earlier with the skate park, I've talked to them many, many times.
Okay.
Initially, they didn't realize that we're not an HOA, so we don't really have any authority or power.
Yeah, just involuntary.
And just what can we do in a long-term fashion, working with Ms. Duncan's office? Because again, the Bay Shore incident, there were about eight neighborhood associations, we all met. We met one more time, and then interests sort of waned, unfortunately. So, this would be a structure where you would have continuity.
Well, yeah.
And we can take input and bring it to the individual council members.
And I, and, but I just wanted to salute you for, uh, the genesis of this and, and Councilman Maniscalco. I think it's a great thing. I think when voters approved offer transportation or message to, uh, elected officials was just a back-to-basics approach, which is, look, potholes, uh, uh, bicycle and pedestrian safety, things as basic as sidewalks, uh, uh, you know, re, repaving streets, et cetera. Let's start to invest in these issues, and we're willing to pay more money for it. And that's, I think, their message to us. So I think it would really behoove us to have a, uh, an engagement-type of board like this. I think when, when I look at the members of council, we have very, uh, ambitious, uh, members who are new, who want to, and, and the ones who are returning, myself included, want to roll up our sleeves and, and work really hard. And this is a, a, an effort that would really, uh, help to do that. If we can't, um, get appointments from the mayor and we decide to have seven, I think that would be great, which is to have one, uh, from each council member. I, I was looking at it last night, and I thought that, uh, uh, I, I agree with Councilman Goode's, that picking, council picking a chair just kind of gives it like a, you know, uh, I don't know, Soviet satellite type of, you know, a type of influence. I don't want that, obviously. You know, I, I, I would have liked, uh, and, and I don't think we can, uh, uh, potentially be amenable to this, but to see somebody, I know that there was a reference to, uh, the word urban there, uh, and there was some vagueness as to that, but also to see someone from the special needs community. I'm the chair of the Transportation Disadvantage Committee with the MPO, and, you know, uh, uh, I think it is about 70% of people with intellectual disabilities don't have a job. We have about one in nine people here in Hillsborough County who have a disability of some sort. You talk to folks, whether it's autism, development of disability, uh, cerebral palsy, whether they're blind, whether they're suffering from an ankle fracture, whatever it may be, uh, disabilities and transportation. I mean, I, I always tell people, the reason why I, I, I champion vet various transportation-related endeavors in my, uh, public career, uh, we, we have this debate, not so that, uh, a lawyer living in Hunter's Green can cut down his commute from 50 minutes to 40 minutes, uh, and, and God bless that lawyer living in Hunter's Green, uh, but rather because of, uh, uh, that single mom, you know, raising kids as a CNA, looking at cutting her commute so she can spend more time at work, more time with her kids, et cetera. And I think that, uh, disability goes 110% in this. I see this as a resource for city council, a resource for us to use as much or as little as we want. We can meet with our members, we can meet with, uh, with individuals, just like the CAC with the MPO. The, the board would be very different than, I think, from what the MPO does. We're looking at suggestions, um, over here. And, and I also hope, and I know we all agree with this, that we also have a board that reflects the diversity of our city, 110%. Uh, uh, we're, we're, uh, looking back towards our neighborhoods, and we have to, uh, look for pluralism and diversity, uh, in that regard. So, thank you very much. Uh, Councilman Citro.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, you always have, you always have last word, but I, I just wanted to, to touch on, uh, city attorney's, uh, comments, that this is going to have to apply with, uh, sunshine laws. And, uh, Councilman Goode and Councilman Carlson, uh, we discussed, and I hope you remembered, that on the Charter Review Commission, we had planned for the next Charter Review Commission to come up, and the transparency be the key. We have fiduciary responsibilities, which has been brought up in the last month, that hopefully this, uh, advisory board will have the place to meet, hopefully within this, uh, this chambers. Will also be able to have a budget so that it will be on CTTB, so that people that can't make it can actually see the transparency of this advisory board. So I'm hoping that we can include those sort of things when these, uh, when this is set up.
I agree. Uh, Councilman Maniscalco, and then Councilman Goode.
Well, I wanted to see about if it was appropriate to make a motion, um, directing, Mr. Shelby, uh, to come back, I don't know, end of August, or how much, how much time would you?
No, I, if you, if, if council wishes the July 18th meeting or the August 1st meeting, but you also have the mayor's budget presentation that day, it's your council's pleasure, whenever.
All right. Uh, I would say July, July 18th.
That would be fine.
Uh, would it be under staff reg? Would it be under staff reports?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Then I'd like to make a motion that Mr. Shelby study this and then come back with further details and options and information at the July 18th meeting under staff reports.
And before we do that, Councilman Gooz, would you have anything to say?
Well, Chairman, I know your love for the disability community, and I just want to give you your accolade for suggesting, and I think you're right. I think you need a 4-2-1 with four districts, two at large, and a special needs. I think that is a great way to go, and I applaud you for bringing it forward.
I appreciate Councilman Gooz. I think that's great. We have many people here. I mean, I, I'm not saying we would appoint her, but I can't help but to think of a woman that we all know and love a lot, Karen Clay, you know, and just think about what she brings to the table with her son, Michael. So, so thank you for that, sir. Thank you. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by Councilman Citro. All in.
Not to get into any more details, but we didn't just create these numbers, just the.
No, no, he's gonna, Mr. Shelby.
That's to me.
All the options.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And anyone else? And yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
That Mr. Shelby come back to council at the July 18th meeting under staff reports to look at and present options for this board and provide any other information.
And if you could just classify the name of the board, what you.
Oh, the name of the board, Citizens Transportation Advisory Board.
C tab.
Yeah.
C tab.
C tab.
We have a motion on C tab by Councilman Maniscalco, a second by Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, sir, and thank you, ma'am. Thank you. And, but, are we supposed to take public comment before votes on workshops? Yeah, but just let me, anyone here to publicly comment on this workshop item?
Okay.
There being none, the vote stands.
But thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we move on to item number five.
Good morning, Council. Catherine Foyle, I'm the zoning administrator for the city. I apologize, I'm a little snively. What you have before you is the January text amendment cycle, and there's only a couple amendments that we're asking for transmission, if council so desires, to the Planning Commission. Just as quick reference, for those of you that are new, the process, as I mentioned earlier in a previous public comment portion, there's two cycles per year. We come forward in a workshop to discuss the amendments, whether they're privately initiated from an outside party to amend Chapter 27, or they're publicly initiated by the zoning administrator, or something that the City Council directs us to put into the amendment, amendment cycle. We come forward with that package. Council weighs, goes through the amendments. I'm here to discuss them with you. Legal Department's always here to answer any legal questions or issues that you may have. And then it's at your discretion on the publicly initiated amendments, whether or not to transmit them to the Planning Commission for recommendation at a public hearing, or to continue certain ones to another workshop to discuss more, to get more feedback, to simply table them or withdraw them, remove them from the cycle because you don't want to move forward with them and not transmit them. On the privately initiated amendments, which we don't have any in this cycle, those are amendments, again, a third party outside of the city has paid filing fee and made application to amend the code. So if those come forward, those do need to be transmitted. So I just wanted to make that clear to you right up front. So next cycle, there could very well be privately initiated amendments. I'll present them. We can discuss them. The applicant will be here. Maybe the language will change or be tweaked before it's transmitted, but those do get transmitted regardless because it's a paid-for application. Doesn't mean you have to approve it when it comes back. After it goes to the Planning Commission, they're brought back to you in ordinance form, and we go through a public hearing. There's two readings of the ordinance, and that's your decision at that point whether you're not going to approve or adopt. So that's just the general cycle. So each, the general process, each one, I'll remind you of those steps, and then I'll typically lay out your options of what you can do, which motions you can follow, whether or not you want to transmit. And staff will always be here to help you through the amendments. So really quickly, these are all publicly initiated, so these are completely at your discretion what you'd like to do with them. The first one, amendment number one, on page one of the two-page sheet that we sent through. This actually was a City Council-initiated amendment. It was at the June 7th agenda last year. And I included an excerpt of the transcript. The discussion with staff at that point was about the 10-acre requirement. Because on the kennels, small and large, there is a limit on animals in Table 6-1, which we're changing to 282.25. There's a limit on the small kennels, and those small kennels are in general commercial districts. So those are the general commercial districts that are really kind of everywhere in the city, back up against a lot of neighborhoods. All different ranges of commercial activities can happen, just not in intense commercials. You can't build cabinets. You can't have semi-light manufacturing in commercial general, but you can have all types of retail and other services. Those properties, those zoning districts are allowed 11 to 20 animals for small kennels. The provision in the, in the table, the one additional acre per every 10 animals, that was a carryover from when this was amended several years back, from the old provision in Chapter 19. At that time, that particular council didn't have any desire to change the 10-acre requirement, or the 1 acre per 10 animals. This was brought up, like I said, several months back, and the, the idea from council was to actually make that change, because it is difficult for these doggy daycare facilities that are popping up everywhere to host more animals. They're stuck at that small amount. And we don't regulate necessarily the size of animals. That's not really within our control. But you can certainly see that maybe 25 little tiny dogs versus 25 big dogs. There's room for different things. Properties are different sizes. So this came up in conversation to make that change. So we went ahead and made that change. The other changes that you see really are structural to the table. The table itself is Table 6-1 in the code. And if you notice on page two, the next section of code for large kennels, also is Table 6-1, so it's a renumbering to match up with the section number. We've had comments on the code enforcement side with the legal representative there that he would like to see letter references and number references. That's why we labeled each column with an A, B, and C, so it's easier to cite in code enforcement citations for notice purposes. And this is a general cleanup of the requirements under specific standards, so that when there's general requirements, meeting Florida game and fish, Florida game and freshwater fish commission regulations and so on, that they're all just simply footnotes. So the table, table itself gets more condensed and more clear to read. Page two, large kennel, same structural changes.
Do you have one?
The removal in the center of the, kind of the middle line of the table on the specific standards, is the removal of the 1 acre per 10 animals, which council directed. On the large kennels, those are the ones that are only going to be allowed in the commercial intensive districts and industrial districts. Those properties will typically be larger or they're zoned for much more intense activities. So they are permitted to have, as a large kennel, more animals, as many as they can accommodate, based on the county and state regulations for animals. So this is the cleanup based on what council directed. I can answer questions now, or we can move on to the second amendment?
Any questions from council before Ms. Foyle moves on to the second amendment? Go ahead.
Okay.
So, yeah, I do have a question. I apologize. I'll step out for one second. So arguably, you could have 10 dogs in kennels outside within 10 feet of your neighbor? Is that, is that?
Not, we don't use the word kennel in that way. Kennel is the use itself. So there are runs or pins.
Okay, runs or pins.
That would be outside. That's correct. And then the separation to.
And how does that compare to what, what's allowed now? Or is it the same thing?
It's the same. The distances are the same. They're in current code.
How about?
If the language is not underlined, it's existing code.
How about the quantity is the same?
The quantity is the same. 11 to 20 in small kennels. It's just that the provision in that table is that you have to have an additional acre of land for every additional 10 animals.
An additional what?
10 animals.
An additional?
10 animals.
Before that?
I'm sorry.
An additional?
1 acre.
Acre?
Yes. So you can see on the CG properties, if you can picture all the corridors that we have in the city with commercial general, along Dale, Dale Mayberry and South Tampa, for instance, it's commercial general, and we've got a lot of the little old strip centers. The properties are not very deep. They go in to renovate a portion of that building to put in a doggy daycare, and they're only, they can fit 20 animals in what they have with the little area they have outside. Maybe they take over a bigger portion of the building because they don't have to necessarily have outdoor space for all of them at the same time. They can go in and out with different groups of animals. Now they take over a larger area, and they can physically fit more animals based on the county and state regulations. But our rule says you have to have an additional acre, just to add one more animal above 20. So they're kind of stuck. And I think that was the issue that was raised, is some of the doggy daycares, especially in tighter areas and smaller corridors, where there's building room for them to have it, to retrofit these buildings, there's no land available to meet that provision. And so they're stopped. And that's what the previous council was discussing, taking away is that provision.
So this is strictly the outdoor issue, not what they can do inside?
It's really a land issue. It's the quantity of land. It's whether it's indoor or, or outdoor. There's no additional land to have that acreage to support more animals for this provision alone. It has nothing to do with whether or not they can actually keep the animals physically by the county and state rules. We just have this provision that you have to have extra land for more animals, really for no reason other than that's the old rule that we had.
So it seems to me, and I don't know much about doggy daycare business, but it seems like there's been a proliferation.
There's a lot of them. Yes.
With cameras and music, too. But anyway, but, but just to get a better understanding of it, because sometimes the tables and charts are confusing, I would assume a lot of these doggy daycares are doing more than 10 animals at a time.
In the small facilities, they're allowed up to 20.
Okay.
If they want to go to 21, the, our rule works, is they got to come up with an extra acre of land in the same zoning district.
Okay, so 20.
But if they're.
So 20 is the threshold?
Mm-hmm.
And how does that relate to the industry practices right now?
That's the issue, is 20 isn't enough. The industry seems to be changing to where there's more than 20. These facilities are getting bigger because there's more demand. So that was essentially the, the item that was brought up.
And then I guess my, my question is, from a small business perspective, or whatever we want to call it, if they're inside and it's air-conditioned and clean and sanitary and everything else, why do I care if they have 21 or if they exceed 20, except?
That's the point for, for striking it.
I'm sorry?
That, that would be the answer, the reason why it's being stricken, because they're inside, so it really doesn't matter.
Okay, so the future, so the one you're proposing, that's what I'm trying to get at, is the one you're proposing. The one you're proposing would not have a limitation?
It wouldn't have the additional acreage requirement.
Okay. So they could have, how, what would the limit be?
I see what you're saying. You know, that's a good question. This provision, come to think of it, this provision is there, but the limit is 20. That was the question that we had for council, is how many? Sorry, I had a circle on it. That was the question we had for council, is what the, what is the limit? What would you like to limit?
Do we have any, do we have any specific feedback from the industry?
The comments, I think, were around 30 or 35 is the one group that was coming in.
And the, and the other issue, the other issue that I can see from a neighborhood perspective is if you're taking care on a daily basis of, just like child daycare sort
Yeah.
Is the drop-off and pickup.
Right.
So if you get too many, maybe I don't care what's actually happening in that building, but in terms of drop-off and pickup, you might, it might, you know, if you have 50 or 100, then all of a sudden, maybe you got people lining up, you know, for drop-off and pickup, which is not what that neighborhood wants either.
Yeah, the parking, the parking ratios definitely go along with that use, so they'd have to accommodate more parking. There is a limit because the lands are, the space is limited to add more parking even. So they can only get so many parking spaces on those properties anyway. And that would then kind of limit how big it can be, which then restricts the number of animals.
My last question, Mr. Chairman, thank you. What does this do to existing operations?
It would potentially allow them.
And including veterinary, existing, you know, vets who've been around forever, you know, with their, with their operations. I mean, I'm thinking Tampa Veterinary Hospital on Kennedy, they had my dog, you know, back, back in the 50s and 60s, and they've been around, I think, since the 30s or 40s.
And those are.
What sort of grandfathering is there?
It's not that they're grandfathered. It's, we would be expanding the amount potentially. So they would actually be allowed to have, they'd be legal essentially.
Okay, so we're just clarifying.
If they have to have more animals. So in the small kennel, they're not allowed to stay at night. They're just for grooming and daily keeping. The large kennels is when they can stay at night, so that typically is your vet offices. And those large kennels are, like the ones on Kennedy, are actually the more intense zoning districts, so those are fine. It's just that they are allowed to have more than 10, but they have to have an extra acre of land. And it's very hard, like on Kennedy, to find extra acres of land just because of that rule. It's zone commercial. We're constrained by the corridors we have and the land that we have. So council believed that it was just easier to get rid of that provision of the extra acre, because we just can't magically create land for that.
Councilman Miranda, then Councilman Gooz.
Thank you. I need to see if I can understand the whole ramification. Regarding zonings, what kind of zonings do they need? Regarding, then, within that zoning areas, there's various capabilities that people use to, to leave their dogs somewhere, especially when they go on vacation. They might be for a week or 10 days. They may have one, two, or three or four dogs, or five cats and four dogs. And regarding grooming, in a grooming area, salon, I've never taken my dog to a grooming because I don't have one right now. What is it that is required there? And for training, when you train a dog on a professional level, it's one dog at a time. Is there any difference in any ramification of zoning laws and size of structure?
Not in the zoning world, no. We don't control the plumbing issues or the, the health department certifications for sanitation or sewer requirements or anything. Those are all other regulations. We don't have any regulations for training, or how much area they have to have to train, or what type of cert, types of certifications. All of that is left to the underlying county and state regulations.
And I've heard you've mentioned only dogs. Is it just for dogs?
No, no, it's any animals. Doggy daycare, that actually fits under farm animal in our definitions, so no. Hopefully, you wouldn't be dropping a horse at a daycare facility. But maybe, I don't know, maybe you will.
Well, we talk about animals. People have the right to have any kind of pets they like. In fact, I know somebody used to have lions and cougars. So, I mean, to each their favorite.
Yeah, I use doggy daycare as the typical.
That's why I said, you always.
They could, they could drop a cat. They could drop a guinea pig.
It's got to be more to the dog.
Right. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay, I will move on to Amendment Two.
Wait, our Councilman Gooz.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I guess my concern is, you know, being a person who's been to houses that have tons and animals, tons and tons, my concern is, have we researched what other best practices are as far as what is the actual limit? You say 30, but is that the, the standard now?
We would set a cap in the zoning world, but what happens is, from the county and state regulations, that you back into that number by the amount of space you physically have. So we can set an overall cap for whatever it is for zoning and use purposes, and they can try to achieve that number, but if they don't have enough area to actually do it in the building or the outdoor pins, then they can only achieve a certain portion of that. If they have enough area for enough space for outdoor pins and for inside, and they can achieve whatever cap you set, then that would actually be okay because they'd meet those standards. It's like for daycares for kids, you're allowed, I think it's 30 or 35 square feet per kid. You have to have indoor, outdoor, and you have to back into that number. Properties are only so big, buildings are only so big.
How many cages per kid?
Well, that's bad.
Well, with kids, there's always someone coming to check and see the number of kids in that space.
Yes.
So are we having someone to do that as well? Will that, you know, to make sure they?
Well, we don't regulate that. That's at the county level through Animal Services. Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. So those inspections happen there. We would be inspecting code enforcement-wise to see if they exceed the cap for our purposes. So maybe our cap is 20, but on the county side, under the Animal Services rules, they actually can fit 58 legally, because there's enough area for sanitation purposes and dog space, cat space, whatever else it is. They have enough physical space to accommodate 58. They have enough physical space to accommodate 58. They put 58 in. The zoning, the city controls the cap for use purposes. We set it at 20. That's a city violation. That's a code enforcement action. Then the complaint from the owner is, well, I'm allowed to have 58, I've got enough room. They're stuck with this rule. Then they can't make up land because there's no additional land. So that's the rub, essentially. And it's really because we don't regulate the other side of it, we don't inspect for it, we don't control the regulations about that spacing for animals because we don't do that work. We don't inspect for animals that way. It's not our role. So we just look at it from a pure use standpoint, and we set that cap. So, okay. Any other questions? No? Item number two, amendment two on page two. This reads pretty straightforward. This is to deal with the height definition. So the definition of height right now in the code, and it's been this way for decades, probably 40-plus years, it's the vertical distance between the elevation, the mean elevation of the proposed grade at the structure front. So now you're driving down the street, you see the grade at the front of the house or the building. That grade is the dirt, and we set a maximum height above that. And that height is to the peak of the roof, the highest point of the structure. That's what you're allowed to build. So whatever your dirt is at the front of the building, up. Some jurisdictions do it to the roof line, which is that eve line. Some jurisdictions do it to the top. It's done different ways in different places. Right now, the way that it is with the FEMA flood maps, and this is the graphic I gave you as an example.
Push it over, Ken.
Yeah, I was going to show this one first, but let's see. This is the policy decision that council ultimately needs to make. And Ms. Morris here from the legal department to explain and discuss any potential legal issues, depending on which way council wants to go with this. The FEMA flood maps are changing, and they're pending. They're going to come anytime. They've gone through all the public requirements, public hearings, everything else. Our staff has been trained, our floodplain manager's up to date. He's spread information and done workshops and everything else, and so we're just waiting for the final announcement to say, implement these maps. What that's changing, if you notice, this is a segment of Davis Islands, and we pulled this one just as an example for you. Anywhere along the coastline, along the bay, even up the mouth of the river, any place where there's storm surge, anywhere in those floodplains, these zones exist. The V zones are velocity zones. Those are the ones that are going to be impacted more by wind and storm surge right up front. And you're going to have a higher base elevation that's required. You're going to have to build your buildings higher for your finished floor. Ultimately, so that storm, that wave doesn't come and just hit your house and it's sitting at grades, you have to build higher.
You lift it up.
Yep, you have to lift it up. So the velocity zone on this side, this is the current map we have right now. This is a portion of Davis Islands. The velocity zone is right kind of along the edge of the island. This is Legota, right on the edge, right there. So it's just off the edge. It covers a few whole houses, and then it cuts some houses in half, essentially. The new map, and this is coming from the federal level, so we have no option. This is what it is. It's 10 feet is your base flood elevation, and the Florida Building Code has a design flood elevation of one foot above the base flood elevation. So existing grade, 10 feet above is the base flood elevation. Florida Building Code says your finished floor is one foot above. That's your design. So now you're 11 feet up, right? The new map is changing to 16, so now it's an extra six feet above that. And remember, if you're measuring height, overall height in our zoning districts to build is from grade, and now I'm taking away all of that area, and now I'm taking another six feet away, and my cap is 35 feet, I'm eating into that building, obviously. This is changing to 16, so it's 16 plus the one, which is 17 feet. And the AE zone, which is the next level in, is changing from 10 to 12, so it's an extra two feet. To give you an example of the velocity zone, and this is one of the graphics the floodplain manager shared with the public and the industry and uses to explain it. You have it, I think it was the second or third page I gave you. This is an example of the peer system, essentially. This is in a velocity zone, Davis Islands. The existing grade is at six feet. So the grade isn't zero, okay? It's the number of feet above the mean sea level. So sea level is zero, grade is six. So Davis Island's portions of it are sitting only six feet above the water that's out on the other side of the seawall. You start your measurement for building height at the grade, the way we regulate it. So now it's 35 feet above that, which is 41 feet above grade. In the current code, as I mentioned, and under the current maps, it's 10 feet plus the one, so you're eating only 11 feet in, which would put you at 17 from 41. So 17 from 41, in the current rules, you'd be left with 30 feet of habitable building height out of that 35, the way it's measured. The way the current rule, or the future rule works from FEMA is that now you're at 17 feet up to here, so that actually reduces it to 24 feet overall buildable habitable height. Ultimately, what happens if we stay with a 35-foot height limit in residential districts in these zones, then you're reducing, what builders are doing now is that 30 feet, and they're able to put in two stories with comfortable ceilings, essentially. And they're also able to have pitched roofs because now there's enough run to have a rise because we measure height to the top, the very top. If we take that down to 24 feet, actually, it is taken down to 24 feet if we don't adjust the definition. That's taken down to 24 feet. That is essentially two stories, period. And what the effect is essentially all flat roofs if we don't change the definition of height. So this is the policy decision ultimately for council, is whether to keep the definition of height the same way we do it today, from grade to the top, or if we're going to make an adjustment and start measuring height from the required finished floor. Because this is being done to them, essentially. The additional height, or the additional elevation is being done to us because of the floodplain changes. The question for council is whether or not we want to absorb that six feet and allow that measurement to happen from here, or if we want to keep it here. That's the essence of this definition change. And you can discuss amongst yourselves, ask additional questions. I know there are builders and some people in the audience that want to speak as well. And as I said, Ms. Morris here to discuss also.
Councilman Carlson.
How much discussion and public engagement has been done on Davis Island about this? Do the residents know that this is coming, and what's their feedback?
They do know, the public in general knows about the FEMA map changes and what that does. Like I said, the floodplain manager, they're obligated essentially to roll this stuff out, and there's been a lot of public engagement on that. And as far as I'm aware, everyone realizes it's causing an intrusion to that space. So what is, ultimately, it's your decision, what is council going to do?
Has there been a specific meeting with the neighborhood association to talk about this height increase?
About the elevation increase? I can't, I don't-
No, I mean about the proposal that we're talking about today.
You mean the code amendment itself?
Yeah.
No, not this particular code amendment, no. Because ultimately, if you transmit it, then I would hold a big workshop, because this is truly your decision at this point, what you want to do with it. If you do move forward with it, I would have a public information workshop with people to discuss it and go through the options and hear the feedback and then come forward to you.
And then we would make a fight, we would just-
Exactly. Because there'd be two readings of it anyway at the end.
Okay.
And the planning commission has a public hearing in the middle as well, once you transmit it.
And then Councilman Citro, then Councilman Miranda.
If we do not have this code changed, the areas that are within the flood zones, the builders will be forced to build one-story homes?
Either-
More than likely will be forced to build-
They'll either be really tall ceilings in a one-story home, or they could squeeze two stories in with very short ceilings and flat roofs. Because there just wouldn't be any additional room above.
And with land at a premium within these flood zones, the builders would only be able to do one story without being able to do two stories would maximize the livable spaces in these homes.
It would. If someone chose a style of architecture that they wanted a pitched roof, then it would be a one-story home.
Thank you. Councilman Miranda.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And Ms. Coyle, thank you for your presentation. We've been hearing about elevation zone rising all over the United States, and I understand no matter what its nature, no matter if we're causing it, no matter what it is, it's going to happen from what we see in the records. So that being said, we've always talked only about the elevation of structures. And my concern is, once this is done, let's say it works, what are you going to do with the road? How are you going to get to your house if it's flooded? I'm just being an asking question because I understand that. I try to make common sense out of something. I said, okay, I do all this and I fix it, and then nobody can get to their house. How do I solve that problem?
I think that probably goes back to the bigger discussion on transportation and infrastructure issues that you had previously.
Do we have any conversation of this going on anywhere?
Not on the planning zoning side, no.
Well, so you're going to have houses that are beautiful, dry, and empty? Maybe, I guess. I'm not trying to be funny or anything, but it doesn't make logical sense that you do all this to prepare something that more likely is going to happen, and you've seen things that are happening already all over the country, and especially in other parts of the world. And yet, we're not doing anything for the road. So I tell myself, what's the idea of doing this if nothing else, you can't get there? Thank you very much.
Councilman, thank you, sir. Councilman Dean Felder.
Ms. Miranda, it's kind of scary when you and I start thinking alike.
Well, you're getting bald, so I taste your comment.
That must, definitely must be it. But Ms. Coyle and I and Ms. Morris, we were meeting a little while ago, talking about these issues, and the discussion flowed exactly where you're talking about in terms of, you know, the buzzword is the resiliency, you know, how resilient as a community we are, and what are we doing in our community to prepare? And also, from Ms. Coyle's perspective, what can we do with our zoning codes and our building codes to address some of these issues as well? Specifically, you know, we've always allowed builders to come in and put in fill to get to a certain height. Now that height is even higher, you know? So can they continue to, you know, to put in 11 feet of fill till they get to their front door? Or is there a better approach? Not only from that individual homeowner's perspective, but from the neighbor's perspective. So, and that's just one of the resiliency issues. At the end of this discussion, I just wanted to throw this out there to kind of point out that, you know, that we're on the same plane. And I know other council members, we've talked about resiliency at the camp intro quite a bit. But eventually, when this discussion is over specifically, I'm going to make a motion that we start talking and workshop and resiliency.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. The final amendment, amendment number three, this is a really simple one. It's simply a cleanup of the section reference under the alcohol regulations for expiration suspension of permits. It did refer to section 14, 151 for excessive noise. That code has changed slightly with the terms, so we simply reference to chapter 14, which covers it. That was from the legal department, it was just a simple cleanup. So after you hear from the public, I would simply ask you to make a decision on whether or not you're going to transmit as-is each amendment, or if there's any tweaks that you would like to make, that you would make a motion to transmit directing what those changes would be, or if you want to continue any of the amendments to another time to discuss more, you can do that as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further questions from council? Okay, being known, we proceed to public comment. If anybody hears from the public and would like to comment on this particular workshop, come forward at this time for three minutes.
Good morning, council. Gary Brown, 491 Severn Avenue, Davis Island. Almost a 40-year resident now on Davis Island. I've seen a lot of change happening, I believe good change. Have been wondering myself what was going to happen when FEMA came back to us and started proposing that we elevate future homes, any impact on that neighborhood. Now, I want you to also know that I've been involved in the Davis Island neighborhood stewardship team for almost a decade, so I'm very well familiar with what I believe most of the stakeholders on Davis Island expect to hear when this topic comes up. I totally agree that there needs to be a lot more public discussion and conversation about it, but I agree with Ms. Coyle, I think you need to transmit to get the process started. Otherwise, we'll be here five years from now talking about it because there's a lot of questions. So personally, as a builder, yes, I'm of the opinion that most property owners who spend the amount of money that they have to spend to purchase property on Davis Island, especially waterfront property, would not be happy about shrinking that vertical envelope, okay? So if nothing else, I would hope that if FEMA comes up, whatever, that that envelope be allowed to go up at least the same amount. Otherwise, you're going to cause a pretty significant change in the architectural form of what's going to be built. And I think we all like variety. I know for a fact that the stakeholders on Davis Island over the years have expressed one of the great things about our neighborhood is there's a lot of variety. People who choose to live on Davis Island are not the same people who choose to live on Harbor Island. They don't want architectural controls. They don't want homeowner association telling them how to, you know, how to live in their homes and how to build their homes. So all of that fits in with the plan, but I agree, there needs to be some discussion, which there really hasn't been yet. And again, this is all relatively new. FEMA's been coming down the pike for years. Now it's here, and this is probably the first change, I don't know, might be good for another 20 years, maybe not. You know, we just don't know. Whether you believe in global warming or not, rising tides are here to stay, and we've seen proof, even on Davis Island over the last couple of summers, that when we get these heavy rains at a high tide, the water has no place to go. That causes the street beds to fail, which causes potholes that everybody complains about, and they don't understand why the city won't rush back and fix them every time it happens. You don't have enough money. So there has to be a discussion, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. If you guys will excuse me, I have to, there's a meeting with the administration that I have to go to for something with my district that I've tried to push back, but it's occurring, so I have to leave in maybe back in 10, 15, 20 minutes, so I'll leave this to your councilmen.
Your excuse.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, thank you. I'll be right next door. Thank you very much. Next person, please say your name for the record.
Steve Michelini. Just so you understand what's happening here, and I think you have a pretty good concept already, but FEMA came in and they said, you know, in order to protect the property, and this goes back to Councilman Miranda's comment, it's really to protect the properties that they're insuring under the federal flood insurance program to minimize the impact on those claims, and to protect the properties to make sure that as best they can, in the event of a catastrophic event, that they don't have wholesale flooding and absolute destruction of those existing structures. This is for new construction, but it affects all of the FEMA flood maps throughout the city. This is not a Davis Island or South Tampa issue. This is a citywide issue. And there are many areas within East Tampa District that are in a flood zone. There are many areas all along the river, going all the way up through Seminole Heights and through, all the way up to the USF area that are in flood zones. So I think that this approach is, in a universal manner, is effective, and I think it is a wise approach because what it basically says is, whatever FEMA tells you that elevation is, that's where you start measuring from in addition to the one foot of free board that the city has in the building code. So it doesn't discriminate anywhere within the city. It says, if you live in a zone and it says it's six feet, then you adjust for the six feet. If it says it's 10 feet, you adjust for the 10 feet, or the one foot, or whatever it is. But I think one of the mistakes that we make is by trying to identify this as, well, this is a South Tampa issue, it is a citywide issue. And if you don't start addressing it now, then you run the risk of jeopardizing your flood insurance programs, all of your construction. As Gary pointed out, you end up with very expensive properties and a one-story house. And that would be true anywhere, not just in South Tampa, not Davis Island or anywhere else. So I think I would request that you vote to transmit this. There'll be plenty of discussion, there'll be other workshops, and there'll be at least two additional public hearings to come forward if this has to be adjusted. two additional public hearings to come forward if this has to be adjusted. But, you know, in looking at it, I think it is a smart approach to say, whatever FEMA says the elevation is, that's where you start measuring from, as opposed to trying to adjust the heights of all your zoning districts, your maximum heights. How are you supposed to guess what they're going to be? You would have differing heights all throughout the city, and then, I'm not sure you want to do that. So anyway, I would respectfully request that you transmit this. As you know, I represent a number of builders. The Builders Association has looked at it, and they're very concerned about it as well. So like I said, this is not, this is a universal issue, not a singular issue.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak? No? Mr. Councilman Dingfeller.
So I think, I think we're a little bit between a rock and a hard place on this. I think as Mr. Carlson alluded to, and not just Davis Island, a lot of neighborhoods will be impacted by this, and I think it's going to be a rude awakening for some people, because right now, it appears to me if you add the 35 feet plus the existing 11, you have potentially a 46-foot, you know, height above grade at the peak of the house. Ms. Coyle, correct me if I'm wrong. Am I wrong? I'm talking about under existing, under the existing situation.
Under existing, it's 10 feet, and that is measured from mean sea level. So that's the zero. So then you start at grade is where we measure height. Height is 35 feet from grade.
Okay.
The problem is, the sea level requirement is chunking away at that 35 feet.
So I misspoke. So what I'm saying is above sea level, it's 50, now we're switching it from, I think, 46 feet above sea level to 52 feet above sea level.
Yes, and then you subtract out whatever the grade is, and that'll be the height that you see standing at the edge of the property.
Anyway, my point being is for that neighbor that's across the street, perhaps not necessarily in that zone, or whatever, they're in their existing one-story ranch house that they've been in for 30 years, and that new house gets built across the street on the seawall, that new house is going to be 52 feet above sea level. It's going to be a big, a big, tall, large structure. A very high structure, higher than, six feet higher than what it was before, potentially. With that said, like I said before, there's going to be some rude awakenings with those folks who are impacted like that. But the flip side is, from a fairness perspective and an equity perspective and a federal government perspective, I think we're between a rock and a hard place and don't have a lot of choice. So if I ultimately support this, that's why.
All right. Anyone else? No? All right. Councilman Carlson.
I think, based on what they said, and I'm new to these processes, but we're approving to transmit this, but then there will be a public process, and so we're not approving it yet, we're just approving, taking it to the public, right?
All right. Anyone else? No? Is there a motion?
We'll transmit the item to the planning commission.
Motion from Councilman Miranda with a second from Council, a fast second from Councilman Gude. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you very much. That completes, or that concludes the agenda. I'll go to information reports and new business by council members. I'll start with Councilman Carlson. Any new business, anything you want to bring up? No? Councilman Miranda.
I'm going to take his two plus my two, we'll make it four, Mr. Chairman. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to have a scheduled physical year 2020 budget workshop on City Council's regular meeting date of June the 27th, and further request a city clerk to schedule the workshop first.
All right. We have a motion from Councilman Miranda with a second from Councilman Citro in favor?
Right.
And Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion for the mayor's physical year 2020 budget presentation to be scheduled on City Council's regular city council meeting date of August the 1st, 2019, at 9:00 a.m.
Second.
Motion from Councilman Miranda with a second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
And Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to prepare accommodation for the Honorable Fran Davin. She is the League of Women Voters Hillsborough County, 2019, Lifetime Achievement Award honoree. The combination will be presented to 14th Annual Lifetime Achievement Award Luncheon on 30th of May at 2019.
We have a motion from Councilman Miranda with a second from Councilman Citro in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Chairman, I would like to make a motion for accommodation to Jane and Gary Gibbons, the recipient of the League of Women Voters Hillsborough County, 2019, Sidney and Thalia Potter Civic Leadership Award. The accommodation will be presented on the 14th Annual Life Achievement Award Luncheon on Thursday, May 30th, 2019.
I second that one.
Motion from Councilman Miranda with a second from Councilman Citro, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes?
I have a question.
I'm going to give them to you.
He has it all type time.
Yeah, I'm going to give them to you.
Oh, Councilman Citro, second.
What was, I'm sorry, excuse me if you can, just clarify, Madam Clerk, the workshop date that was requested for that motion that Councilman Miranda made, I just want to...
I have a quick area of people who need some...
Oh, you didn't have one for June?
I didn't have it, I said that we'll transmit.
Oh, no, 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 I'm just talking about, just so council knows, and I apologize, Mr. Miranda. Because of the council break, the workshop is normally scheduled for the last week of the month. June's workshop is scheduled for June 20th, so I just wanted to make sure that if you scheduled a workshop for June, it was the correct date of June 20th. I don't know if that's the case. It might have been something I misheard. But I'll double check with Mary.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else, sir?
That's it, sir, thank you very much.
Councilman Citro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, nothing much. I do have to submit a Form 8B, because I had to abstain from voting on the May 8th meeting.
All right.
May 16th, excuse me.
Second from the chairman.
All right. We have a submission from Councilman Citro with a second from Councilman Miranda to accept that? All right. Thank you very much. Anything else?
No, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Gude. Councilman Dingfeller.
Yes, Mr. Chair Pratim. I'd like to move for commendation to Ms. Cynthia Cindy Sarf, who has unfortunately decided to retire from service to this city council and to this councilman and the councilwoman Capine. 16 years of loyal service. She claims she wants to move back north to Illinois and suffer the cold up there, but anyway, we'll look at June 6th and we'll drag her out here kicking and accept the commendation.
We have a motion from Councilman Dingfeller with a second from Councilman Miranda, all in favor? All right. I have a few motions. Do I give it to the CRA chair or the immediate pass?
Whoever's close.
Is the CRA, would it be you? All right. All right, thank you very much. Item number one, I'd like someone from staff to come back June 6th under staff reports to address some of these for-profit clothing and shoe drop donation sites. We've received several complaints, they are scattered throughout my district because they become dumping grounds. People don't just leave clothing and shoes and whatnot, but they're leaving furniture and mattresses and all sorts of nonsense. I want to see, you know, what in our code, what in our policy we have to help regulate this, to do something about this, you know, just to get some information.
Second.
All right.
Motion's been made by Councilman Maniscalco, seconded by Councilman Miranda. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Second is, I'd like to invite property appraiser Bob Enriquez to come speak before council on June 20th. Let's say 10 minutes, it may not even take that long, pertaining to the upcoming trim notices.
Do you have a second? Motion made by Councilman Maniscalco, seconded by Councilman Gude. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion passes.
And then final item is, you know, I like history, y'all will hear lots of, you know, stories of the past from me, but this year, March 30 years, that we renamed Buffalo Avenue to Marlothar King Jr. Boulevard. And actually, that initial vote was made July 27th of 1989. We don't have a council meeting that day to coincide with that anniversary, but I've noticed that throughout the country, there have been designations and street renaming, bridge renaming for former President Barack Obama. Former President Obama visited Tampa, I know, on two occasions. I know he spoke in Peabor, and I believe he was maybe the first sitting president to speak at Centennial Park. And I know he came to visit again in West Tampa. He came to the West Tampa Sandwich Shop, so much so that they named a sandwich after him. I didn't get to meet him, but I saw him as his tour bus was leaving. And I'd like to ask, I believe it would be Tom Snelling, not Gene Duncan, to possibly come back at our June 27th meeting to see about not an actual street renaming like a Marlothar King, but an honorary designation. If there are any thoughts, any ideas? One idea that I had, maybe this won't work, is the bridge on MLK. I call it the Buffalo Bridge, people call it the MLK Bridge, maybe that cannot be done, but something that, you know, some designation that we can give from an honorary standpoint. We did it most recently for, like Monsignor Higgins on Hines, certain stretch of road we've done in the past, and that's it. So June 27th, I would ask for Tom Snelling under staff reports.
Second. Councilman Maniscalco, excuse me, can you restate the motion?
For Tom Snelling to come to council June 27th under staff reports to see about any possible locations for honorary street designation, renaming, not, you know, renaming the street, but adding that honorary marker for former President Barack Obama.
We have a motion made by Councilman Maniscalco, seconded by Councilman Dingfeller. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Motion passes.
That's it?
Councilman Gude.
No, no, I already did. All right, well...
Okay.
And that...
Will you file all the documents?
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Councilman Miranda with a second from Councilman Citro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And we are adjourned, thank you.